Good evening. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'm Jim Rodecky, and along with Alderman Ron Singer, I'm the 4th Ward Alderman. Tonight it is my honor and pleasure to chair this Committee of the Whole Meeting. Let the record reflect that all Aldermen are present. Normally we don't start the Committee of the Whole Meetings with the Pledge Allegiance, but I think given the celebratory nature of today that we should begin with the Pledge Allegiance, I ask everybody to stand. And I ask Chief to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to item two, do I have a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Minutes from the July 13th, 2016, July 13th, 2016, July 18th, 2016, and July 25th Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Move second. Voice votes necessary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the items of business. Item A, Oath of Office and Penning Ceremony for Fire Chief Michael Antonori. I'm going to turn that over to the Mayor, but before I do that, the first item of business for you is to issue a citation for overcrowding in City Hall. And that would go to the Mayor. I'll turn it over to the Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Antonori.
Mayor?
Please join us at the podium, sir. The Committee of the Whole knows who you are, knows of your background, unanimously have supported your appointment, and you have some special guests here tonight to join you in this celebration. Would you be so kind as to introduce them to all of us?
I will. My mother, Judy Antonori. Put your hand up.
Hi, Mom.
My wife, Mary, who we've met before, my father-in-law, Bill Flaherty, my daughter, Ashley, and my sister and her husband, Sue and Tom Lopper.
And you have some very distinguished guests from your first-time employees or employer...
And I will call them out, too.
Yes, please do.
So on the far-left is Stan Gibson, who was my Vice President until I left the company, and Greg Traynor next to him, who was my General Manager until a few days ago, and Larry Gass, who was a manager many years ago, and Larry has a distinct honor as the reason I became a firefighter. He took me aside as a young rural lad, said, "You know, you're working too hard. You're not doing anything other than work." He said, "You ought to consider something like getting an MBA at Northwestern or something like this." So come back a few months later, I said, "This is what I want to do." He says, "Okay." It wasn't what I was thinking, but... And that's what started me on the process of getting hired, so thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Couple decades-plus. For those of you who are not aware, soon-to-be Chief, will you share with us your history with the city of Geneva's fire fighting force?
Sure. I started in May of 1996 as a recruit firefighter, paid-on-call. Made it through training, became a firefighter the next year, progressed through engineer and lieutenant, paid-on-call, and I've served for 20 years. Probably as much as half again, as much as another full-time job. I was never home, which has become evident that my wife really wasn't used to me being home the last few months, so this has been an adjustment for her as much as me, so... But proudly served and honored to take the next step.
Fantastic. And Mrs. Antonori?
Yes, sir.
We owe you a debt of gratitude as well, because this is indeed a family affair. And of course, Ashley, thank you as well. Your son's not with us this evening?
He's watching in Lexington, we hope.
Welcome. We hope as well.
Or it's a YouTube rerun later this week. He is in his first week of being night auditor at a hotel, so his sleep patterns are a little off, so we'll see if he made it tonight, so...
Well, we know the commitment that your husband and father share, that you share as well, and we thank you very, very much for loaning his talent and his dedication and his commitment to the fire service. So thank you. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome. We've always known this is what he really wanted to do with his life, and we're just happy to see it actually happen.
And you've got your team with you tonight, too, right, Chief?
Yep. Men and women of the department, also some visiting chiefs of department, I think they're in the vestibule back there.
Yeah, I saw that. Some other communities are here.
Yeah, they're here. They haven't quite made it in, so it's a great honor for them to make the visit and show some support.
They're probably calling right now, like the Chairman said, about the violation of the occupancy.
Could be, so... Fire Marshal's on his way over here right now, so...
Afront, he's not here?
I haven't seen him yet. He could be, might be somewhere.
Might be somewhere. Who would you like to have join you while we administer the oath?
My wife and daughter.
By all means. No, come to you, Chief.
All right.
Get this baby out of the way, huh? Oh, the command staff is here. Make sure we don't fluff this up. Looks like a lemonade. Give the big guy. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael K. Antonori.
I, Michael K. Antonori.
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Chief in the city of Geneva...
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Chief in the city of Geneva.
...County of Kane, F. Orsette...
County of Kane, F. Orsette.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Fire Chief...
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Fire Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Antonori's going to pin the Fire Chief badge on our Fire Chief. And to make it official, folks, Chief Antonori is a signless document. And you were on midnight shifts originally, but...
Thank you.
Check this out.
Chief, on behalf of the men and women of the department, we are proud to present you with your official chief's helmet. We hope that you wear it with pride as do us all listening, and we look forward to you leading us in the future.
No, I think we're moving to the next thing.
Okay, moving down to item B, under Items of Business, that would be the Fire Department Promotion Penning Ceremonies for Lieutenant Steve Jones, Joe McNally, and Scott Helmlinger.
Mr. Jones, where are you, sir?
Here.
How are you?
Good.
Why don't you stand at this podium and tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name's Steve Jones. I've been a member of the department for going on 13 years.
Wow.
I also now work full-time for the City on the Street Department, and I've been there for three years.
You are the tannest firefighter ever seen. Is that all their street work?
We had a wedding in Mexico, one of the guys here.
When?
Like, two weeks ago now, and then we just had a wedding at Lake Geneva, so we've been in the sun for like the last three weeks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
No kidding. That's awesome. So where are you from?
I grew up in St. Charles.
You did?
And then I worked for the city of St. Charles for 12 years, the Park District, and then I moved here. And I live in Batavia, so I've been all around the Tri-Cities.
So you just skipped Geneva?
Well, we're working on coming to Geneva.
I understand. And so you must be a saint, not a North Star, right?
Yeah, I was just a saint. It was just St. Charles. Yep.
Would you like to introduce your special guests?
I have my wife, Katie, and my daughter Amelia, and my son Teddy, and a whole bunch of family. There's a lot of them.
It's a lot of Joneses, huh?
Yeah.
So the whole adage of keeping up with makes sense?
Yep.
Are you the only firefighter in your family?
No, my dad was a paid-on-call lieutenant for the city of Carroll Stream for 12 years when I was growing up.
Fantastic. So this is in your blood?
Yeah.
And you always wanted to be a firefighter?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yep.
What inspires you to join the service, then?
The brotherhood, the family notion. I grew up in it, and it's just something that always stuck with me.
And Mrs. Jones, you approved?
Yes.
There's about a goddamn... Who would you like to have join you?
My wife and my kids.
Absolutely. Oh, I met this young lady on the way in. Awesome. Good. Face the command staff.
Oh, yeah. Fire and squad.
This gentleman's name is Petty?
Petty.
Teddy? All right, okay.
Did you get five?
You get five? All done. All right. All set?
Yes.
Repeat after me, and raise your right hand. I, Steve Jones...
I, Steve Jones.
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant...
After being appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
In the city of Geneva...
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, F. Orsette...
County of Kane, F. Orsette.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Fire Lieutenant...
The Office of Fire Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. And Lieutenant, if I may trouble you for your signature?
Yes, sir.
And will witness that in front of the Chairman.
Good luck.
Thank you. I met the McNally family earlier. Joel, where's Joel McNally? Here he comes, man.
All right. Yeah, I think so.
So introduce yourself to all those tenants this evening.
Joel McNally. I was born and raised in New Jersey. I moved out here in 2000.
What exit?
What exit? Off the Turnpike.
Off the Turnpike?
Yeah. Yeah, and I was a volunteer with my father. He was a volunteer for 25 years, and he got me into it and came out here and applied for Geneva, got hired, and...
Wow.
2005, I got hired on Geneva Fire Department, and then 2013, I got hired on full-time Public Works Street Department.
There's a pattern here, isn't there?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, where was Dad a firefighter?
In New Jersey, Surgeon'sville, yeah.
Thank you, sir. No problem. If you want to sneak up here and get a... Unless that's his best side. And Joe, you've got some friends and family here as well?
Yes, lots of family, and my wife Lindsay, and my five-month-old son Mason.
Mason, very exciting, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
So besides following in your father's footsteps, what inspires you in terms of the fire service?
Brotherhood and legacy.
And what is the legacy?
Dad taught me a lot, you know, just be there for your fellow firemen. It's one big family that you'll never... That will never leave you, so...
Short and sweet, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's awesome. Pretty cool about the new chief, huh?
Yeah, pretty cool.
Anything else you'd like to share?
Nervous.
Why?
I'm not a public speaker at all.
You know this is being televised, why?
Yeah, I know. That's the worst part.
I mean, it'll be seen over and over.
Yeah, uh-huh.
More people are watching this tonight than there are gymnastics.
Oh, fabulous.
And this will be archived forever in the city of Geneva's website, do you know that?
Even better.
Who would you like to join you while you administer, while you are taking the oath?
My wife and son.
Awesome. Check out Mason, man. This guy...
First Mason.
If he ran away...
He might have walked out.
He might have walked out?
Okay, he took off.
He was crying.
Okay, he's crying. So just Lindsay, then. He's crying.
Face the command staff, if you will. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joel McNally...
I, Joel McNally.
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant...
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
In the city of Geneva...
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, F. Orsette...
County of Kane, F. Orsette.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Fire Lieutenant...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Fire Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, Scott Helmlinger, taking the oath, Fire Lieutenant. Here he comes. What was that?
Good evening.
Is that a good thing?
I don't know yet.
So Scott...
Yes, sir.
We all know you, right?
I don't think he does. I'm sure a lot of people know me, yes.
Tell us about yourself.
My name's Scott Helminger. I've been with Geneva for 25 years.
25 years?
25 years. I love the department. I work a full-time job, welding, so busy, busy.
What is your full-time job?
I weld aluminum.
So you're in the heat all day?
I'm in the heat all day and in the heat at night, too.
What's changed in the 25 years you've been on the team?
Oh, boy. The people, chiefs.
Not much, though, my God. Almost was here for 100 years.
Frank Johnson, too, yeah.
And you have special guests with you this year?
I do. I have my newly-wife.
Wait, wait. You're newly?
Newly-wife.
That's the Mexico wedding. Oh, no. And when was the wedding?
July 22nd.
You forgot that, dude.
This is a tough crowd, I'm telling you.
22, well, congratulations. And thanks for the invite.
It was an open invitation.
It was an open invitation?
Yeah. We had 54 people.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Did you write your own vows?
Yes.
Yes.
I did.
Oh, you lost a bit and had to write your own vows?
Yes. But if you look on Pinterest, there's a lot of algebra. Perfect. Along with my wife, my daughter, Abby, Brooke's parents, Paul and Tammy, and I have my sister, brother-in-law, and my nieces and nephew.
Wonderful. Great turnout. Did all of you go to the wedding in Mexico that we weren't invited to?
Uh, yeah.
Of course.
I went, too, so...
Did you really?
Yeah. And Battalion Chief Forrest.
I was there.
I missed that one.
I'm on the Do Not Fly list.
I think Jones, I think Jones it was, too.
Oh, Jones?
I was there.
McNally was there, too?
No. Are you kidding me?
New baby.
New baby.
And you paid for everyone's trip there?
Yes, I did. That's why I got promoted, for the money.
He gets his promotion.
Who would you like to have joining you?
My wife and daughter.
Fantastic.
And hopefully my older daughter's at home watching on YouTube, so...
Scott, raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Scott Helmlinger...
I, Scott Helmlinger.
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant...
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
In the city of Geneva...
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, F. Orsette...
County of Kane, F. Orsette.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Fire Lieutenant...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Fire Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Scott Helmlinger, taking the oath, Fire Lieutenant. Here he comes. What was that?
Good evening.
Is that a good thing?
I don't know yet.
So Scott...
Yes, sir.
We all know you, right?
I don't think he does. I'm sure a lot of people know me, yes.
Tell us about yourself.
My name's Scott Helminger. I've been with Geneva for 25 years.
25 years?
25 years. I love the department. I work a full-time job, welding, so busy, busy.
What is your full-time job?
I weld aluminum.
So you're in the heat all day?
I'm in the heat all day and in the heat at night, too.
What's changed in the 25 years you've been on the team?
Oh, boy. The people, chiefs.
Not much, though, my God. Almost was here for 100 years.
Frank Johnson, too, yeah.
And you have special guests with you this year?
I do. I have my newly-wife.
Wait, wait. You're newly?
Newly-wife.
That's the Mexico wedding. Oh, no. And when was the wedding?
July 22nd.
You forgot that, dude.
This is a tough crowd, I'm telling you.
22, well, congratulations. And thanks for the invite.
It was an open invitation.
It was an open invitation?
Yeah. We had 54 people.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Did you write your own vows?
Yes.
Yes.
I did.
Oh, you lost a bit and had to write your own vows?
Yes. But if you look on Pinterest, there's a lot of algebra. Perfect. Along with my wife, my daughter, Abby, Brooke's parents, Paul and Tammy, and I have my sister, brother-in-law, and my nieces and nephew.
Wonderful. Great turnout. Did all of you go to the wedding in Mexico that we weren't invited to?
Uh, yeah.
Of course.
I went, too, so...
Did you really?
Yeah. And Battalion Chief Forrest.
I was there.
I missed that one.
Do not fly those.
I think Jones, I think Jones it was, too.
Oh, Jones?
I was there.
McNally was there, too?
No. Are you kidding me?
New baby.
New baby.
And you paid for everyone's trip there?
Yes, I did. That's why I got promoted, for the money.
He gets his promotion.
Who would you like to have joining you?
My wife and daughter.
Fantastic.
And hopefully my older daughter's at home watching on YouTube, so...
Scott, raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Scott Helmlinger...
I, Scott Helmlinger.
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant...
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
In the city of Geneva...
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, F. Orsette...
County of Kane, F. Orsette.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Yes!
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of Fire Lieutenant...
Faithfully discharge the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. There's a tradition in the city of Geneva of those newly sworn-in lieutenants buy pizza for everybody else. Correct?
Chief, remember your prayer.
Continuing with the items of business for tonight, we'll go to item C, recommend approval of special events application for the Zomer Childhood Disease Foundation's Trick-or-Trot 10K Run Sunday, September 25th, 2016. Is there anybody...
So moved. Second.
Motion by Cumming, second by...
Bruno.
Bruno? Zomer, would you care to speak to the issue for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name's Paul Zomer. I'm at 418 South Sixth Street in Geneva, and again this year, we're having the Trick-or-Trot. We moved it to Sunday to try to increase a little participation, but, and we also had to change our route slightly because of the River Street rework, so we'll be going down Second Street a little farther and then cutting over on South Street, but we'll get that all worked out. It won't be an issue, so...
How long has the event been going on?
This is the sixth year, I believe, so... And we usually get between 200 and 250 runners, and we have Mayor Burns do the emceeing, which is...
He's not running?
No, he does not run, but...
Haven't ran in six years.
But it is well-attended by real runners, which is nice, so... Any questions?
Questions for the committee? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving to item D, recommend approval of special events application for Chicago Race Management Oh La La Chocolate 5K Run Sunday, November 6th, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Double.
In a second?
Second.
Is there anybody to speak to this?
I am here to speak for this also. This is our second event that we do. And we, we teamed up with Chef Roby last year to do this. And I think we've got about over five hundred runners and walkers, and it was a great success. And, uh, people had a great time, and we just look to, uh... This year, we are benefiting the On Ecology Services Camp up in Lake Geneva. So, we're giving scholarships to go to that. So, we're looking forward to another great year.
Again, thank you. Any other, any questions? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving down to item F. Recommend waiving of bidding process and authorized...
E.
One or...
Oe.
E.
I'm sorry, point, I'm sorry, we moved to items of business E. Recommend approval of special events liquor license for Fioras. That would've really ticked them off. The Little Traveler and Geneva Wine Cellar's Festival of the Vine. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motioned by Sino, second by Bruno. Any discussion by anyone, either on the deus or in the audience? Hearing none, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now, we move down to item F under items of business. Recommend waiving of bidding process and authorized purchase of membranes from Dow Water and Process Solutions at a cost not to exceed $138,225. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Marx, second by Singer. Do we have any comments or questions from the deus? Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item G. Recommend approval of a draft resolution amending the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation for the subject realty from single-family residential to single-family attached residential K. Hovanian Homes. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Marx.
Second.
And a second by Bruno. Uh, before we begin entertaining discussion on this particular item, I'm gonna ask David DeGroot to, uh, DeGroot to come up and speak to this item briefly. Just to remind everybody, this item and the discussion, we would like to keep very limited at this point. Um, it is just, uh, to consider the, um, change in designation of the city's comprehensive plan. Um, this is not the item nor the time to get into the specifics about, um, stormwater management, about, um, traffic and other issues that might be, uh, related later on in the evening. And my guess is if this item does not pass, that this room will empty out fairly quickly. So, we do wanna keep the, uh, the discussion limited, um, to this point specifically. Um, should this item pass, we will move on with more detailed discussions as the evening follows. And I appreciate everybody's, um, cooperation with that. Thank you. David?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's largely what I wanted to say as well. Um, just to give a brief overview, the next three items are all related to the Geneva Meadows, um, subdivision proposal on Western Avenue. The proposal's for a sixteen-lot, thirty-two-unit duplex development. Um, the first request, again, is to change that future land use designation from single-family detached to single-family attached. So, detached, single-family homes, or duplexes, three flats, or townhome developments. The, the question there is whether or not we think the future land use should be something other than single-family. Um, the second request is just to change the zoning from the R1 low-density, single-family district to the R6 district. The R6 district is, um, the first district that does allow for two- and three-family, um, units. It doesn't allow for anything larger than that. So, if you were to go to four units and above, that would require R7 districts only. And then the last one is for the actual subdivision proposal itself, including the, the engineering plans, the elevations that were proposed. Uh, the applicant is here this evening, uh, with their development team, and they would like to address the council on each one of these requests. Um, so, understanding that we're moving forward, uh, discussing them one by one, I think they would like to address the first request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight. My name is Jim Truesdale. I'm with K. Hovanian Homes. Uh, also with me tonight is our, our development team. Scott Behrenbrugge with K. Hovanian. Vince Rosenova, who's, uh, our attorney for this project. Rich Olson with Gary Webberner Associates, our land planner and landscape architect. And Eric Lord, something, they're bad, uh, with Atwell. Uh, they're our engineer. So, we have our entire team here that was involved in this. So, we're prepared tonight to answer any questions you have uh, in response to any comments from, from the council or from the public tonight. But I'm happy to be here tonight, uh, just, and I know we have a limited amount of time, so I'll, I'll try to be very brief. And I know there's a lot of people that wanna talk tonight, uh, 'cause I know there are a lot of, uh, concerns, uh, which is certainly understandable. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a small infill piece. There's neighbors living around the site, so, uh, I, I certainly would expect, uh, the neighbors to be concerned and come out and ask questions. And we hope that we can respond to them all tonight, uh, effectively. First, a little bit, uh, and again, it's about K. Hovanian Homes. A lot of people don't know who we are. You may have known us better, uh, as Town and Country Homes. We were previously Town and Country, a private builder. Uh, we were purchased by K. Hovanian Homes, uh, back in the early 2000s. Uh, so, it's a national public building company. Uh, we have two hundred and seventeen communities in, uh, thirty-four markets in sixteen states. This gives you just an idea on this slide of where, where we are. We're a substantial builder. Uh, we're throughout the Chicago metropolitan area. Uh, the blue star shows the Geneva Meadows' proposed subdivision. Uh, just to show a little bit more where we're building in the area, uh, we have act, eighteen active selling communities within the Chicago market. Uh, several here in the area, both in DuPage County and Kane County. We have two in Naperville, including Trafford Place, which is another, uh, uh, single-family attached community. Uh, we're in Wheaton, Campton Hills, South Elgin. Uh, last year, we built about three hundred homes. Uh, so, having said that, uh, this is the site. It's about a seven-point-four-acre site, uh, located, uh, on Western Avenue. A major collector street. Fargo Boulevard is to the south of us. Uh, there's the park further up Western Avenue to the north. And, uh, Western Avenue Elementary School is further to, to the south of us. To address the comprehensive plan issue, I know, uh, the staff has covered it really very well in their staff report, uh, but one of the things we've tried to do is address some of the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan. One of those being addressing the needs for a diversification of housing to provide, uh, a larger diversity for different, uh, uh, different households, uh, within the community. And specifically looking at options that would provide more housing opportunities for senior citizens. And that's one of, that's what we've really targeted here with, uh, with this program. If you look at the, uh, the census for Geneva back, uh, from two, from 2010, uh, almost half the householders are fifty-five and over. Uh, between fifty-five and seventy-five-year, year-age range is about twenty-five percent of the population. So, you can see, it's a very large segment of the population. And what we find is there's not a lot of opportunities for the buyer who wants to stay in the community, who wants to move down to a maintenance-free, uh, maybe smaller home, uh, but still live in a single-family environment. And that's what we've kinda tried to achieve here, and why we've chosen this site, and why we think it makes sense, 'cause it brings a single-family attached product that meets these goals into the neighborhood, close to downtown, close to transportation. Uh, average household income in that age group is, is almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, net worth of about one-point-seven million. And it's increasing. Fifty-five and over population, uh, is expected to go up, uh, through 2020 and beyond. The site plan itself, again, relating it to the comprehensive plan, as I've said earlier, along Western Avenue, uh, is the location. It's located on a major collector, which, uh, we feel is appropriate for a, uh, single-family attached development of this, of this type. The other thing, uh, that is beneficial to the site and why it's appropriate for this type of use is it doesn't have any other direct connections to any single-family detached neighborhoods. We're not putting any traffic directly into, uh, by connecting a street into a, a subdivision immediately next door. We've basically turned our back on the single-family subdivisions around us, provided a buffer. We've both utilized, uh, the existing vegetation that's there on the site, as well as provided existing vegetation to provide, uh, adequate buffers through the site. But the way it was designed, we bring the traffic out to the major collector, uh, which we think is the appropriate way to handle it. Uh, we've provided a park site along Western Avenue, so the people coming up and down Western, they're not gonna see backs of homes, they're gonna see into a park site. Uh, other than that, they're gonna see, see the sides of, of four buildings. It's gonna look and feel very much like a single-family detached, uh, program, uh, with large, single-family homes. So, we've kept that, that look along Western Avenue as a high-quality landscaped look, uh, low impact on, on people driving by the community. Uh, just, again, uh, some views into the park. This is right from our landscape plan. This is an accurate look of what this would look like along Western Avenue. This is looking into the park from, uh, from across the street. Right now, there's an existing home in this location. We're looking to save a number of the trees, the larger trees, uh, that are in this area. And so, we've designed the whole community to kinda focus and back onto that area where we'll be providing a trail system that goes back through that area. Another view of the, uh, of the same area. Uh, this is the south entry, so it shows what it would look like if you feel for what our architecture looks like as you come into the community. Again, it's, it's, uh, it, it has a single-family scale, a single-family feel, and that's what we're trying to keep, so that we're compatible with the neighborhood. But at the same time, providing a housing type that provides the diversity that I think the community needs, and that I think there's a very strong market, uh, out there for. So, uh, we have found in the duplex development, for example, our Trafford, uh, that we showed earlier in Naperville, has just opened recently. It's sold very well, so we've, we're finding a strong demand for this type of product, uh, in the market. But this gives you, uh, the, the character of what we're trying to achieve. Every unit has a two-car garage with a two-car driveway, so there's sufficient parking. We've designed this to meet all of your subdivision standards. Uh, so, again, we've tried to do everything in here to make this look and feel like a single-family attached, or single-family detached, uh, community, to maintain compatibility with the neighbors. Uh, this is our elevation. Again, we've tried to use a variety of materials. We use shake siding, we used horizontal siding, we used brick, uh, windows in the garage doors. And it's a lower-scale building, again, to keep that compatibility. Uh, the building itself, from the, from the foundation to the peak of the roof, is under thirty feet tall, so it's a lower-scale building. Basically, everything is on the first floor, your master bedroom. We do have, uh, in, in one unit, it's optional, and a couple others, it's standard, a loft area where you can get a second, another bedroom up in the second floor. But it all fits within the roof there, so it keeps that ranch-looking scale to it, while it does offer a loft, so when, uh, grandkids come over, uh, kids come over, they have another place with a bathroom and a bedroom, things upstairs, uh, above the, the main living area. The other thing we looked at was, in terms of impact and fitting into the surrounding neighborhood, was the distance between our buildings and the surrounding neighborhood. And as you can see, uh, it, it's actually quite substantial. As you go to the east, there's an old railroad right-of-way in that location. I think many of those homeowners have, have purchased that right-of-way and added it to their yard. But within that right-of-way, there has grown substantial vegetation. So, and along that east line, we have not only a vegetative buffer, but we also have the distance, two hundred, two hundred and twenty feet. Uh, the closest, uh, home we have in the east line is the large home there at the northeast side of the development, which is about ninety-five feet away, but still buffered through landscaping, uh, and, and adjacent to the, uh, stormwater detention basin uh, to maintain that privacy. Uh, we have well over a hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet as you go across Western Avenue. Uh, and then to the south would be the closest homes, a hundred and ten feet to sixty feet at the closest point. The one thing we've tried to do with this plan, uh, to, again, buffer the neighbors and provide that compatibility, is where we are the closest along that south line, we've provided enhanced landscaping, we've provided a solid screen of evergreen trees along that south property line. The west, uh, I'm sorry, the east half of that south line, there's already existing heavy vegetation. We're enhancing that. Uh, the west, the west half of that south line, uh, there is no vegetation. But again, we're adding that solid screen, which is what you see in that south line at that location. So, we have privacy provided for, uh, for both the existing residents and for our, uh, our future residents. Uh, this is actually a look along that south property line back towards the west, so you can get a kind of a feel for the vegetation that's in that area. Drainage, I know that's, we're gonna be getting into that probably later with the subdivision. Uh, our engineers here, uh, the only...
I would prefer that we not discuss the addition of the sub.
Okay. Okay, okay. The only point I would wanna make on this, and, and we'll point that out later, is the, the drainage, whether this is single-family, uh, attached, as we're proposing, or detached, effectively will be the same as far as how it's handled and the release rate across, uh, from this property. So, it's, it's compatible to single-family, and the release rate is the same. Traffic, again, I'd wanna get into that. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, before I open it up to the audience, are there any questions for Mr. Truesdale from the deus? And again, please, uh, questions and comments, please keep them as germane as possible to the item on the agenda. Thank you.
I don't have a question for Mr. Truesdale, but I have a question for David. Is that okay?
Sure.
So, the item, the item we're addressing right now is changing the comprehensive plan to allow a certain type of multifamily to go on this property, correct?
Correct.
So, in that context, um, David, you, you alluded earlier to the specific type of multifamily we're looking to allow. So, I think that to, to help me get my head around what that means, I'd like to ask what other types of multifamily that we have in Geneva, whether or not they could go on this site. So, for example, the Muse on Seventh, with what we're proposing to make, uh, this change, could the Muse go in here?
Well, with the comprehensive plan change, y-you're talking about changing the, the land used to attach single-family is really all it encompasses.
So, it's not the three-family specific that comes later?
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't put a density cap on it or a unit cap on it. So, under the comprehensive plan designation, it could, it could be duplexes, three flats, or it could be the Muse. But that doesn't entitle any zoning rights.
Right, I get it. So, I'll save that for, this question is best for...
Probably the zoning-related, yeah.
So, I jumped the gun. Rats.
Thank you.
David, don't sit down yet.
Alderman, Marx?
Dave, David, quick question. Homes in the changing region. Did we choose this lot as one that we would look at and consider for, um, higher density?
This was one of the sites identified as potential for higher density, yes.
About eighteen months ago, correct?
Sounds about right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions? Alderman Burkhart?
Does this have to pass to move forward with the next two items?
Yes, so the, the comprehensive plan, um, the zoning request needs to demonstrate compliance with the comprehensive plan. Um, so if this doesn't pass, the zoning request should not pass.
Alderman, Marx?
One other quick que, uh, the vote at the, uh, Plan Commission for this was?
For this was eight to one, in favor.
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cummings?
What sort of inquiries do we get from builders that approach Geneva that are interested in doing residential building?
Predominantly for multifamily products. Um, we've seen it for, uh, affordable senior housing. We're getting a lot of inquiries for that, um, largely because of the work we've done with the Homes for Changing Region Plan and the identifying our needs for affordable senior housing. With projects that we've approved recently, we have Park Place, the multifamily townhome development on Route 31, Riverbank of Geneva, on South Route 31, for a townhome development. The great majority of what we're seeing interest in is for some type, some sort of multifamily product for a move-down buyer.
Thank you.
Alderman Singer?
Uh, David, I, I see in the Plan Commission minutes, uh, that the motion was carried, as you indicated, eight to one, uh, and the, um, opposition vote was by the, uh, chairman of the Plan Commission, Mr. Rogers. Uh, did he give an exam, a reason as to why he voted in opposition?
Yes, he felt that it was, it was surrounded by detached, single-family homes, and that introducing this type of product might not be compatible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Alderman Burkhart?
Just related to that, can you talk to us about why this parcel was identified as a possible, possibility for higher density? Because it really is surrounded by single-family homes?
Sure. Um, well, with, with the Homes for Changing Region Plan, um, we identified the need for diversifying our housing stock. We're predominantly single-family. I think we're at like seventy-four percent, single-family, throughout our community. And, um, regionally, the average is more like fifty percent, single-family, and then the rest is a mix between attached product or multifamily product. Um, so, we really have an unmet demand for some sort of attached, single-family product. And we're also kind of locked in with our borders, to the north, to the south, um, to the east with West Chicago and the Peck Road's kind of our boundary line to the west. So, we have very limited opportunities to accommodate this market demand. And, um, in that map, that mapping exercise we did about a year and a half ago, we identified any vacant sites or potential redevelopment sites as opportunities for higher density.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Cummings?
David, what was the, what was the housing surrounding Park Place before Park Place went in?
Well, the, the block itself had, um, a mix of, I think it was six or seven, single-family homes and a few duplexes on the block. Those, that those were all demolished as part of the redevelopment. Um, and then to the south, you have single-family homes. And, um, to the east, across 31, you have single-family homes there as well. Uh, we have a mix there. You have some duplexes and some, single-family homes. Also with Park Place, half of the block was already zoned, R6, I believe. And it was, it was zoned then to R7 to allow for a higher density.
What housing, what type of housing surrounds Riverbank?
Single-family, um, single-family to the south and to the, uh, to the west.
And what kind of housing surrounded the Muse when the Muse went in?
It was before my time, but I imagine it was, it was, what exists today is the single-family housing to the, to the north, south, and east, and then the multifamily across Seventh Street.
Uh, thank you.
Any other questions from the deus? Okay, I'll open it up to any questions from the audience. I do have the sign-in sheet, um, for people that would like to get up, uh, should this, um, fail. This discussion will probably end for most of you now. Should it move forward and we get into more detailed discussions, I will be sure that everybody is recognized that signed up, and everyone will have, uh, opportunity to speak in more detail. So, comments now are open to the public, um, just for item G as it currently sits, if anyone would like to speak to that. Uh, please approach, please approach the podium and state your name and address for us.
Jim Man, I live at 1254 Galway Court. Uh, I'd like to ask Mr. DeGroot, uh, what was adjacent to Cooper Woods? I think Cooper Woods was something that was recently approved, approved, something like this development. Is that correct? What's, what's adjacent to that?
The recently approved Cooper Woods is on South Street. It's the twenty-one-lot, single-family subdivision that was approved a little over a month ago by the city council. Um, to surrounding that, you have, you have the golf course on, on the eastern edge. You have Burgess Norton Industrial to the south and to the north. You've got single-family, um...
What about to the south?
To the south is the Burgess Norton.
Burgess Norton. Okay, so, so we approved Cooper Woods. It's got adjacencies that you would think would be okay for this kind of development. Is there any other, uh, development like this in the city of Geneva that's completely surrounded by single-family? We're gonna change the comprehensive plan for some nebulous reason that says we need, is it senior housing or something like that for people like me? And I don't understand why we would change the comprehensive plan. This makes no sense. If you were gonna draw up the comprehensive plan five years ago, you would've never said, "We're gonna make this, uh, single-family detached," or whatever the heck the designation is. You wouldn't make it R6. The only reason it's R6 is 'cause we've got this proposal before us. But it makes no sense to put this kind of a development amongst all these single-family... But it makes no sense to put this kind of a development amongst all these single-family homes. If it was your home, you wouldn't want it there. We don't want it there either. I would request that you disapprove the change to the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Before, before we move on, one minute, please. If at all possible, could we please hold some of the applause? We'd like to move as rapidly as possible. We also want to be fair to all the speakers and make sure that we have enough time for everybody to speak. I understand that it's hard not to, but do the best you can with that. The Chair would appreciate it.
What is the timeframe, Mr. Radicki?
As much time as, as much time as you'd like.
Okay, that's what I thought. So you're not going to close at eight or nine or 10, right?
No, but I'd like to make sure that everybody has an unobstructed ability to speak and doesn't feel intimidated, because there may be people that wish to speak on the other side of the issue, and it would probably would be fair to them to give them the same courtesy.
Right.
Your name and address, sir?
Dan Conisek, and I live at 1244 Galway. I, I don't think a lot of the people may know when you talk about what a comprehensive plan is. So what is the comprehensive plan? When was it drafted? And who drafted it? Can you tell us that?
Mr. DeGroot, would you like to address that, please?
Our current comprehensive plan was adopted in 2003. It was drafted by Hauser Levine and Associates, a consultant the city worked with. It has since been amended several times, either through private applications for, for development or for changes. It's also been amended through our downtown stationary master plan that was conducted in 2012, along with the southeast master plan, sub-area plans that was adopted in 2012 as well. And to answer the, I guess, the first part of the question, the, the city's comprehensive plan is really its vision for the future and how we're, how we envision development taking place within the community.
Right, but they want to know whose vision.
It's the community's vision. It's a, it's an, the planning process is an outreach where we go through several community meetings.
So people like the people behind you, it's their vision?
It's, it's collectively the community's vision.
All right. I have another question on the same issue. So when the.
Yeah. Could you please speak in the microphone?
When the comprehensive plan was done in 2003, was it still a, a greenery out there? That, I've been here since 92, that's always been vacant land, and there was a greenhouse there. So when the folks, I think, stopped selling plants and all that, there was probably seven years ago? So did anybody come up with this idea seven years ago when you made the amendments? Or is this the first time when you have a outside builder coming in suggesting that we need housing for seniors?
I've been with the city since 2008, and I don't think the greenhouse existed at that time. I don't know exactly when.
2006, I believe, the greenhouse ceased to operate.
And since that time, there was a proposal around the time I came to the city for a single-family subdivision on the property. So there was, yes, there was consideration for another development of the property. And then recently, in 2014, it was identified as a potential site for higher-density housing.
Higher-density mean connected housing?
Meaning.
Attached?
Correct.
And that was in 2014?
Right.
Didn't make it into a resolution?
It was not a formal amendment to the comprehensive plan, but it was a, a housing plan that was approved by a resolution by the City Council, yes.
Right. And then, could we ask questions of the, they call them petitioner, the people that want to do this? What do we call, Hovnerian homes?
Well, address the question to me and then I'll.
I want to know if this is a single-purpose entity that is building this lot? In other words, is Hovnerian Homes, the corporation, going to be the entity that owns it, or is it a single-purpose LLC? If it is a single-purpose LLC, I want to know the name of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to pass the question along because I don't believe it's relevant to item G that we're discussing right now. I believe that if it passes.
The only reason it is relevant.
Please allow me to finish. Thank you.
The only reason it is relevant?
May, please, may, please allow, please allow me to finish.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not going to pass the question along at this time. Should this move forward? That would be irrelevant, and your main question as we move down to item I.
The only reason it is relevant, because the gentleman just got up and put up all these nice pictures and said that this company that used to be Town and Country, and I think Town and Country may have had some financial problems, but this company is behind it. So it is, he, it is an issue, Mr. Radicki, because he just told this entire community that Hovnerian Homes is behind it. My guess, it's a single-purpose LLC that's going to build the entity, and, and that's it. And I think we're entitled to know.
And I think at the appropriate time, that information will be shared. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carl Savanda. I live at 1013 Dunston Road. I promise you, I'm not going to use the word "aforesaid" because it's been used here previously.
Thank you, Mr. Savanda.
I believe that you're on the path to spot zoning. Spot zoning is the unreasonable or arbitrary classification of a small parcel of land with no reasonable basis for the differential zoning. Now, we're going to focus here on the comprehensive plan. There are some factors to determine whether or not you're engaging in spot zoning. And one is that the requested change is more in the nature of special legislation. In other words, it is designed to benefit one or a few landowners at the expense of the surrounding land. The proposed zoning, R6, is not in accordance with the comprehensive plan for the area which is involved. Without substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan, you really don't have zoning at all. You don't even have a plan. There are no physical characteristics of this seven-plus acre tract of land which distinguish it from the surrounding R1 land. The subject tract of land can be developed in accordance with the R1 classification. The Hovenian people told us at the Plan Commission that they could build 12 lots on this property. Thank you.
Good evening. I too am happy to be here this evening. I'm sorry, Brian K., 1104 Brigham Way. I was just, I've known that this, the old greenhouse property, as most people call it, was wanting to be developed, and if it's '06, '07, '08, I believe you. But I was always under the impression that it was R1 homes that would be built there. Makes sense to me. It's all R1 there. And we are talking about zoning under this topic, this, hey? So the only thing I would do, and some, some comments came up about various properties around here. The old swimming pool is something that I, that I've sort of enjoyed watching it be developed. And this is, I saw the site plan for this property, single loop, you know, going through it. And it's sort of a similar setup to that. They, they want to have homes, they've got five units there on that centerpiece there, which, at the multifamily place where the old pool was, is all open with exception of a few parking spaces. I guess my, the greatest thing I would tell you is it's surrounded by R1. And I haven't heard the term "spot zoning" in a while, but that's indeed what this is. I'm well aware that, that subdivision did not take place because the economics got so poor. That's probably why it stopped. And I think that builder struggled or whatever. But here we are today, and at any rate, I, I guess what I would emphasize is that it is indeed surrounded by R1. We aren't going to talk about specifics about this right now, strictly zoning?
It's all comprehensive.
Okay. So again, I would say that it's not part of the comprehensive plan, and "spot zoning" is probably a good phrase for it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello? I don't believe my name's on your sheet there. I didn't have a pen when I walked in. My name's Doug Strom. I live at 1250 South Street. The.
Welcome.
The old pool is right behind my house, and they are fine neighbors. I'm here tonight because I disagree with the rezoning from R6, from R1 to R6. I looked at the Google Maps today. The area bounded by Fargo on the south, Cheever to the north, Dunston to the east, and Western to the west is a substantial area. Within that area, there are 31 houses now. If you knock one of them down, I think maybe two of them, we're down to 29 or 30 houses there in that area. If this development goes forward, you're more than doubling the number of homes in that area. I think that that doubling will significantly change the look and the feel of that neighborhood. Hovenian has said that there's going to be a senior living situation. I would suggest that while that's the plan, that may not be the case. I don't think they're going to restrict it to old folks. I think that it's going to be open to anyone with $300,000. Again, that would significantly change the attitude of the surrounding area. Right now, the homes in that area are going well in excess of $300,000. And I understand that that may seem like a first-world problem, but it is a significant change in the, in the look and feel of that area. So going from 31 homes, 30 homes, to 62 homes is significant, and for that reason, I think the zoning should not be changed. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Chairman, my name is Todd Augustine. I live at 1226 Fargo. I'll keep my comments brief for now, but I just wanted to speak at this time. I'm the individual that I think a few people have been referring to. I'm a general contractor, builder in the area. I've lived in Geneva 30-plus years. And back in 2006, just so the record's clear, back in 2006, I entered into a contract with Mr. and Mrs. Hitzroth to purchase the property. I met with neighbors, many neighbors, in the adjacent area. I developed a concept plan. I came to the city. I worked with Dick Unch at that time. City Council, Plan Commission, put forward a plan that would have built 12 single-family homes. Part of the purchase agreement with the Hitzros was to build them and their daughter two homes close by in, in a western suburb. So we found us some property, we built them homes, and as all of you know, and all the people behind me know, the market crashed in a matter of about nine months. My bank was under investigation by the federal government, like many banks were. They basically began to close their doors. They weren't loaning any money. I couldn't get the money. The Hitzros couldn't close on their houses because I couldn't close on their property. So that's the reason that, that development came to a halt. And I think we suffered, many of us suffered for many years with that. And I'm not sharing that looking for sympathy. I'm not going to get any, but I'm beyond that. I'm sharing that because what I did was I went out, I met with the neighbors, I worked very diligently with the city of Geneva and staff to put together a proposal and a plan that met that neighborhood, that the neighbors would have been happy with, the schools, the library board would have been happy with, sure would have brought some kids in. I think that this development's going to bring more children into the school district and into the library board than what they're sharing, but that's for another discussion. But my point is, is that I wanted something, I'm proud of Geneva, I live in Geneva, I wanted something that I could drive down that street 20 years from now, show my grandchildren, say, "I was part of that. I was proud of that." I don't feel that those of us involved in this process, you folks, the ones behind me, in 20 years are going to be able to drive by and say that we're proud of that development. I think it's going to hurt property values. I'm not a lawyer, but I think if someone looks into it, I think that, that this could be challenged. The spot serving that Mr. Savanda mentioned, I think is a very, very valid point. And I think that the adjacent property owners are going to see a negative impact on their property. I certainly want, wouldn't want to look at the back of those units if I live along Fargo or I live along Meadows or on Dustin, and I don't think you would either. So those are my comments for now. I may be back up later, but I do have one comment for David, or question for David. The percentage that you shared of seven, approximately 72% single-family homes, what is that percentage now that Park Place, that Riverbank, and those other units have been approved? Is that closer to probably 55%?
I, I highly doubt that. We have over 8,000 dwelling units in the community, so I doubt it shifted that much.
So what would you guess?
I, I don't want to mention that, but I can look.
It's def, those are definitely adding a number of multifamily units. Park Place was, is how many?
30, and Riverbank was 40.
Okay, okay. So we have seen some of that, that product enter into the Geneva. So, so that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nathan Miller. I'm at 1221 Galway Court. I moved here a couple of years ago, so I'm relatively new. But one of the reasons I moved to Geneva and brought my family with me was because we love the atmosphere. We love the big houses. We love the street. We love the general area where we bought. So that obviously helped the value of the house that I bought, and I think it will do the same for everybody else here. So that's one of the main reasons I moved here. I think we want more people to move to that neighborhood like myself over the next 10 years, right? If this prop, this project goes in, it'll change the nature of the, of the neighborhood. So I think that's the, the first point to make. I think it's very important that everybody consider that. Secondly, you're rezoning this comprehensive plan. If this deal falls through, even if you approve the zoning, but the deal falls through, somebody else comes in, they know that you've already rezoned the comprehensive plan for the next builder. And, you know, that's just going to set up a situation where we're exposed, the city of Geneva is exposed, and maybe doing something different, something similar to this, but something that might turn out just as bad. So I wanted to express my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The developer has talked about this in terms of expressing a single-family home atmosphere. So I'd like you to think about what they're saying. Their single-family homes are 4,000 to 5,000 square feet that cover 60% of each lot compared to the surrounding homes that cover 30% of their lots. If you, if I want to go in and put an addition on my house, I can't do it because I cover 30% of the lot. But I'm going to be looking at a wall of roofs essentially that go all the way across with 12 feet in between them. I think you should give that serious consideration, that that density is significantly different than everything in the surrounding area. When we talk about having moved in the area, it's for the openness that's there. It's not for the density. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time to this issue? If not, I would ask David to please come up to the microphone and do you have, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, one more comment?
My name's Ron Bacovi. I live at 1243.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you in the microphone, please.
My name is Ron Bacovi. I live at 1243 Galway. And I was here at the last meeting, and I'm kind of new to all this, but I'm a physician, okay? And one of the things that interested me in the last meeting had to do with the retention pond that they're putting in because it's an R6. There are no retention ponds anywhere in our area. And they said it takes five days for the retention pond to drain if it's filled. Well, that's well within the lifetime of the gestation of mosquito. And having seen devastation in some of my patients as a result of West Nile, you know, they're talking about the 100-year flood, you know? Well, it seems like every 10 years, a new infection is coming along, new encephalitis that is mosquito-borne. And there are no retention ponds anywhere in our area. The patients that I have seen who've had West Nile encephalitis, and now there's Zika down in Florida, and who knows what'll be next, you know, have all lived near areas where there was a high concentration of mosquitoes. And now you're putting in a, a retention pond that can be a breeding ground for these. I'd like to know what is going to be done to prevent that from happening, especially after the developers move out and leave it to the owners, and why we need something like that? You know, I think that R1 would never have retention pond because the land, building-to-land ratio is such that the water would simply drain properly, you know? And so, I mean, I'm seeing these infections, these plagues, if you want to call that, approximately every 10 years. So this is a lot quicker than the 100-year plague. And I think this is probably an issue that we not only have to address here, but probably our health department has to address this. You know, but there are no retention ponds anywhere that I'm aware of in the R1s. And I'm curious as to what is being done to address that.
David, are there any other retention ponds in R1 that you know of, first of all? And specifically to this development, again, this, should this item move forward, questions like that will be addressed. If not, at this level, those questions will be answered more specifically because it is specific more to this. I understand you're framing it in an R1 background, so let me ask David first, are there any in R1 right now? are there any in R1 right now for the first question that you know of?
There are. Um, there, there may not be many ponds in this area, but this area is older development. Under the new stormwater ordinance, um, that was adopted, I think in 2002, 2002, all new subdivisions would be required to manage stormwater in a similar fashion. The, the development Mr. Augustine referenced for 12 single-family homes on this site, it included detention pond in the same location.
Thank you.
David, it did not, we're utilizing the detention pond to the north of the substation. Did the council hear that?
No, please come to the microphone.
Just to clarify Mr. DeGroot's statement, uh, my concept plan did not include any retention or detention. Um, we were going to utilize the, I don't know if it's retention, detention, um, to the north of the current substation. We were going to tie it to that.
You had to enlarge that pond to accommodate.
No, we, no, the, the, the pipes that were installed along Dustin were increased to the size. At the time, the engineers, city engineers, had said that that would be permissible. So.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Babica.
Richard Babica, Director of Public Works. Uh, while I do not have the plan with me.
I do.
They are in my office, and I can make them available to the City Council if you so desire. Uh, but the Stonegate subdivision that was proposed in 2008 did show the existing detention basin, which is immediately north of the Western Avenue substation, which is currently in place, which did have a number of improvements installed in 2009 to address issues. I don't want to get off track, but the Stonegate plans did show a second detention pond on the south side of that facility. Here's the outline.
Thank you. Again, we, we will, we will get more into the specifics should this matter move forward. So, we're kind of straying a little bit off of the item at hand right now. Alderman Cummings.
I'm looking, I, I live over in Eaglebrook, um, and I'm looking at Google Maps. I have a, uh, detention pond right behind my house. Looking at Google Maps, I'm about the same distance from this area as this area is to a point just south of Sunset. So, as a crow or some other bird flies, uh, that's about the distance that I am, and I, I do have a detention pond. And, um, when it rains really heavily, it fills, and, and we've got three or four feet of water back there for several hours, maybe a day sometimes, but we, we do have that. And that's in Eaglebrook, and I'm on the golf course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, we'll, we'll get into more specifics later. Uh, David, could you come back up to the microphone and, uh, please address, address the issue that was brought up about spot zoning?
Sure. I, I'm confident that this is not a case of spot zoning.
Could, could you elaborate on spot zoning?
Sure. Spot zoning is, um, as Mr. Savanda, uh, mentioned, for a small piece of property. We're talking about over seven acres of land here. An example of spot zoning would be if you had a, an R1 single-family district and you made an exception to convert one house within that subdivision to a convenience store. That, I mean, that is a case of spot zoning, where you're making an exception for one small piece of property, not when you're rezoning large pieces of land. And particularly here, where the rezoning request is, is to a residential district. It's a form of commercial use on the property. The proposed zoning is to go to a attached single-family product, which would be, can be argued to be compatible with single-family development.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, Mr. Savanda, please.
I don't think what you were told is just, is right. Uh, the second factor, the area in which the requested use is to be applied is rather small. The courts have focused on, uh, the number of landowners who are going to be affected by the requested change. Thus, it is with the, uh, actual size, rather than with the actual size of the area. So, we are here benefiting one landowner. We're not, the, the area has not been prevailing in the determination of spot zoning. I would also tell you, I looked at the Geneva zoning ordinance. I did not see in the ordinance as a purpose that we were providing housing for people over 55 years of age, but Mr. DeGroot can correct me if I'm wrong.
I think we're, we're blending the requests a little bit. The Homes for Changing Regions Plan, our comprehensive plan, our downtown master plan, those planning documents have identified the need to diversify our housing stock, and in particular accommodate for some additional move-down senior housing. You won't see that reflected in the zoning ordinance because the zoning ordinance addresses, um, permissible housing types and densities, not necessarily, um, market demands for age groups. Again, on the spot zoning issue, I, I'm confident it is not a spot zoning case. Um, we have several areas within the community that are surrounded, multifamily products by, surrounded by single-family zoning that we've rezoned. Um, I, I don't know what else to say other than I'm confident it's not a spot zoning case.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments at this point, um, I would ask the council, we have a motion and we have a second, and I would ask the secretary to please take the roll call on Item G. And let me, let me just read that one more time for clarity. It's recommend approval of a draft resolution amending the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land designation for the subject realty from single-family residential to single-family attached residential. We have a motion in a second? Yes?
Can I?
Alderman Simonian, please.
Yeah, point of order. If, if the comprehensive plan passes, um, and the, uh, two and three do not pass, that means next week, uh, one will come to the City Council, and it can, at that time, be voted against.
I, I'm not sure I followed your question. Maybe, maybe.
If the portion.
Heard of the city administrator from, I'm not sure I followed it.
Yeah, what, I think what I hear you saying is that if number one passes tonight.
Yes.
But number two and number three or H and I do not, this is a recommending body, so the items that the, the council recommends to move forward would go forward next week, which would just be this item.
Just be this item.
And at that time, you would take a formal vote on however you wanted to vote.
And at that time, it.
It could be whatever.
Since two and three, we could poss, we could, it could be a scenario where we negate that a week from now. Okay, thank you.
And thanks for bringing that because there was a question that was raised, and I had a discussion with the mayor about that. This is a committee of the whole, just as a reminder. This is a recommending body that makes a recommendation to the full City Council for final action, so, just for clarity. Alderman Cummings.
I have a question on, on why the, on why the homeowners, uh, the, the developer's name follows, uh, Item G. Are they considered a petitioner, a requestor for Item G, for Item H, and for Item I? And, and, second part of the question, um, if they are, and we vote no on any of these, am I right in thinking that they then have the right to come up in front of council and request that we rethink, um, Item G, Item H, and Item I? Thank you.
Mr. DeGroot.
To answer the first part of the question is, is yes. The applicant, K Hovenian, um, is the applicant on each one of these items. They have submitted applications to the city for each of these requests. The second part is whether they can ask for reconsideration next week. I believe that to be the case.
But points of reconsideration will fa, would follow normal Roberts Rules of Order, correct?
And again, if you're going opposite of what the Plan Commission decided, then it requires a higher vote for it to move forward.
Correct.
So, it would require two-thirds. And as far, doesn't it? If they're, if they're going opposed to.
I don't think that's the case.
Okay.
I don't think that's the case here.
So, but as far as reconsideration, I guess somebody on the prevailing side would have to agree.
Normal Roberts Rule. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Jean, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Hi.
Tara Burkhardt?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Hi.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Greg Muladro?
I think a simple yea or nay without some explanation is doing people a bit of Points that I'm considering relevant in, in this part of the discussion are, A, although the, the request is being brought to us by this specific applicant, it is not this specific applicant who's telling us that there is a demand or a need for this type of housing. As we consider the facts of the demographics as presented to us in the Homes for Changing Regions study, the community is aging. The baby boomers are aging. Um, also, younger people are looking for ways to get started in a community, and our housing stock just doesn't include the diversity that we need to accommodate that. I like the concept of aging in place, uh, but not to the extent that I would do anything that says you can only put people 55 or older in this specific house. If a property owner wants to do that, they can, but I don't think that that's something that the city can mandate. But the city can pave the way for, uh, housing stock that affords us the opportunity to, to rid ourselves of the exterior maintenance responsibilities if we choose, to rid ourselves of, and downsize if we choose. So, I believe that, that our housing stock warrants, uh, some diversity. The question of whether or not, or actually, let me rephrase it. The fact that this site is surrounded by R1 is the main thing that's troubled me, um, since the developers approached us to begin with. But as Alderman Cummings, uh, uncovered or, or pointed out when he was asking his questions, we've, we've faced the same with Park Place, we've faced the same with, uh, Riverbank, and we've allowed those to move forward. So, I don't understand how this differs that radically from those developments. So, given that I support adding diversity to our housing stock, and given that I think that the surrounding R1 commu, oh, my final issue is that to get to this development, which I feel blends in well, we first have to make this change, I support the change. So, that's a long way of saying aye.
That's an aye. Thank you.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Merducky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
I pride myself on being the senior council member, and that entails 19 years serving on the City Council. And I feel the reason I've been here for that period of time is because I've listened to my constituencies, and I've listened to those citizens of the City of Geneva as well, and have gone along with the way in which they've asked me to move my vote, and asked me to vote in their direction. And I have been inundated by large numbers of people who are not even my ward members, my constituency, but are citizens of the City of Geneva. And I listen to you, and you've asked me to vote in opposition to this, and I will vote nay.
Thank you.
Uh, the motion passes. The motion, the motion on the floor passes with a vote of six to four.
Moving on to Item H. Recommend approval of a draft ordinance rezoning map amendment, the subject realty from the R1 low-density, single-family residential district to the R6 median density, two and three family resident district, Hovenian homes. So moved.
Second.
By Marx, second by Sino.
I don't have much to add, other than, um, this request for the R6 zoning district would again allow for either a single-family, two-family, or three-family units. Anything above that would, would have to be pushed into the next zoning district, which would be R7. And the applicant here, again, is proposing two units with their formal subdivision request. I know that's not the motion on the table, um, but part of the reason they process these requests concurrently is for the sake of transparency, so there was no question about what would be moving forward should the zoning be approved. And I don't know if the applicant wants to address this item either.
Thank you. Uh, again, I'll be, I'll be brief tonight, uh, on, on this issue. But in, in terms of the R6 zoning, as was stated, I think, here earlier under the comp plan discussion, uh, this is not unique in the city. There's been other, other developments that have come in adjacent to single-family, in some cases surrounded by single-family, that have zoning other than, uh, single-family. So, this is not a, a unique situation. Uh, I think the market demands this, as was brought up regarding the Homes for Changing Region issue. The market has changed over the years. There was a day when, when a townhome was strictly an entry-level product. A townhome was a product that you bought because you couldn't afford a single-family home yet, and it was a starter. That's not the case anymore. This is a specific lifestyle product. This is a product, uh, that would be provided under the zone, that we would age target. Uh, and by age targeting, it's the master bedroom down, it's maintenance-free. We've seen through experience that that 55 and older market, restricted or not, does purchase this type of product. I can use myself as an example. I'm in this target group. Uh, I have a single-family home. I have a ranch. I live in a neighborhood that is 75% ranch homes. They're not age-restricted, and we're not maintenance-free. I've got to cut my own grass. A lot of people have, have it done for themselves. But because it's predominantly ranches, and this subdivision now a 30-year-old subdivision, because they're predominantly ranches, that's the market, that 55 and older market is, is what you see there. We have very few children in our subdivision. I can attest, because I, I, I measure it every Halloween, because I see how many kids come to my house, and I get two to three groups of kids coming at Halloween. So, so restricted or not, this type of product will bring in, attract, uh, that type of, that type of buyer. When you attract that type of buyer, it has a lower impact. The impact, schools came up. Based on your own ordinance and the, the population numbers that are provided in your ordinance, the generation factors that the school district uses and the park district uses. If this were 12 single-family lots, the estimate from your ordinance would indicate 14, uh, school-aged children from kindergarten through high school. For an attached program, and that's not even necessarily age-targeted, but for an attached program, it would be seven children in that same category. So, it will have a lower impact on the schools than if it were 12 single-family homes. In terms of traffic generation, uh, from a development like this, we've had a traffic study done. It was submitted. Uh, I believe the Plan Commission had that information, but in the peak hour, a development like ours. Okay, thank you. I forgot that was up there. Uh, you can see, uh, that if it was, if it was a, a traditional single-family development, which is the middle one, in the peak hour in the morning, it would generate 18 trips. In the evening, uh, peak hour, it, it would generate, uh, 16 trips for a single family. A standard duplex development would generate 21, three more trips in the morning. Uh, in the evening peak hour, it would generate eight more trips. Uh, very, in that hour period, that's very insignificant. And in fact, if it were age-restricted, if you look at that lower number, it would generate six in the morning, nine in the evening. Now, we're not restricted, but we feel it's going to be closer to that number. So, in terms of schoolchildren, it's going to be less. In terms of traffic, it's going to be very similar to single-family. Uh, and it's very reasonable, I believe, to have a land-use transition that goes from, from a single-family to a site like this, which is pretty much a, a secluded site, secluded in the sense that it does not have any direct connections to any of the other single-family subdivisions that's adjacent to a major collector. To have a transition from single-family, one-unit residential, to duplex, which is a two-unit residential, to a major collector, and to an electric substation in the north is a very reasonable land-use, uh, land-use transition. Um, we, people talked about concerns in property values. These homes are going to be selling, our base pricing is going to start in the high 300s, and it's going to go well into the 400s. We anticipate that the average sales price out here will be in the mid $400,000. So, these are not transitional people. These are not first-time home buyers. These are people who want to stay in the community, who live in the community, who have a substantial home, a substantial investment, uh, who have high equity in their home, that they can sell their home, they can buy this in a maintenance-free environment, one-level living, still be with their friends and neighbors and in the area that they, that, that they've always lived in, uh, and, and, and still be able to maintain that lifestyle that they're looking for, and still be able to take that, when they sell their single-family home, they'll have that equity, that they can move into something like this and have either a low mortgage payment, no mortgage payment. Uh, so it really does fit the need for that age-targeted, uh, age-targeted market. Uh, it came up, the comment about the distance between homes and ground cover and those things. And, and it's true, under R6, it does allow a somewhat larger floor ratio, but on the other hand, we're not saying this is identical to single-family, but this is highly compatible to single-family. It's elsewhere in town. It's a reasonable, logical transition, again, to move. It's a reasonable, logical transition, again, to move from single-family, a one-unit, to a two-unit, to a collector street, to an electric substation, especially given the way we've designed this. And we'll get into that, I know, into the subdivision, but with the landscape buffers and the distance between buildings. These people are people from the community. These aren't people that are transitional people. They want to be here, they live here today, or certainly in the general area today, and they love Geneva, and they want to be here close to downtown, they want to be close to the train station, and close to where they've always lived. So these are people like everybody else in the neighborhood. So with that, I will turn it back to the board. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the desk on H, please? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pardon me. I probably echo some of what Alderman Maladra said. I want to speak just to the general principle of the rezoning, not anything about the specifics of this plan. We'll get into drainage and traffic and architecture later. You know, working with staff and the reports we've gotten, it's pretty clear to me that we are in need of some housing diversity. There really isn't that many options for us to react, to incorporate this type of housing. I think, as Director DeGroot mentioned, or maybe it was in a display, we do have quite a glut of single-family homes. You know, I walked the parcel today, and I looked at that railroad right-of-way, with the exception of one house, that is a pretty much impermeable barrier, visual barrier to this property. Didn't have a really good sense along the south side. I know staff has worked with several plans that kept the backs of homes off of Western Avenue, the rendering of, well, I'm sorry, we're getting into details here, but, so to this one point of the need for multifamily attached, I think that is a genuine need, and I think, long-term, we as a community benefit from that higher density. So I'll be voting in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra?
David, now we can get to my question. To be redundant, but on time this time. Just so I can get my head around the scale of what we're talking about here, I was using examples of what has been proposed and allowed in other areas. So the specific zoning, can the muse go in? Could something like the muse?
It cannot. The muse would need to be R7.
Ms. Kay referred to the townhomes up by the old pool site. Could that go in here?
Is that Park Place?
What's that?
What's the old pool site?
Oh, it's just north of the tracks on the east side of Western.
Okay. No, that could not. That could not.
I don't know what they're called. They were here when I moved in. The Shadine Townhomes on Seventh Street.
Could not.
Okay, so, in my mind, what we're proposing with this zoning is two-family, it's really attached, single-family housing.
A maximum of three units.
Maximum of three units. Okay, are there any height restrictions?
Height restriction is the same as single-family, which is 35 feet.
Right. So in terms, I do appreciate the person who spoke and said that they'll be looking onto a wall of rooftops, but the height of that wall will be no different than a single-family home. There may be more of them, but some of the single-family homes in this very area are quite large. I remember one went up, and we thought, what hotel is that called? So that was it, just trying to understand the scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cummings?
David, let's say we, I don't want to pick on any particular developer, but let's say we have an R6 designated lot, developer comes in, says, I would like to build attached, single-family attached residential units, I would like them to be for two families. And we approve that, and then they want to build three-family units. What sort of repercussions are out there? What sort of reaction can we have when someone does what I would call kind of changing in the middle of a stream?
Yeah.
Maybe I'm mixing the metaphors. Thank you.
Well, what the applicant has proposed with the actual subdivision would be a by-right subdivision. So should the zoning be approved, they're not asking for any variations from that zoning district. So there's not a planned unit development ordinance or anything like that that we would tie them to specifically to duplexes that we can condition them to. So should this development not move forward, there would be the potential for one of these lots or several of these lots to become, to accommodate up to three units. But in order to do that, they would have to meet minimum requirements. You would still have to comply with maximum lot coverage, maximum building height. There's a density restriction, so you would need additional area on that lot to accommodate a third unit. So not all of these lots may be able to do that. So the short answer is that, I guess, potentially, there could be three units in the future if this development did not build out. But it would have to be reviewed on a lot-by-lot basis.
Let me ask one follow-up question, then, in particular, to this development. Is it possible that if we were to approve H and I, and they begin building, and midway through say, you know, we're going to do some three-family units? Is that permissible?
Again, we'd have to review it on a lot-by-lot basis. It would change their contributions.
Have to come back to the council for approval, though.
It would not necessarily. If it met the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance of the R6 district, it would not necessarily have to come back to the council. They would have to amend their contributions to the taxing bodies, to the park district, to the school district, and we would have to review those lots again on a case-by-case basis to make sure it still met the minimum requirements.
Okay, and then one more follow-up, and I promise then I'm probably done. So then, what sort of restrictions, what sort of guarantees can we put in place if we were to approve this, for this particular builder? What if, any restrictions can we place on something that's already designated R6 to guarantee, if that's the wish of the council, that two-family units go in and not three-family units?
We don't have a zoning district that provides for that. We have single-family districts, and then the next step is to allow for two- and three-family units. So I guess the alternative, if it were not a planned unit development, it would be to create another zoning district that allowed for only single-family and duplex units, which we currently don't have.
Any other questions from the desk? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The lot coverage for, I don't want to get too far ahead here. So if we rezone this R6, that is independent from plating of the individual lots, this is separate from creating lots?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sympathetic to that loophole, if you will. Not that I'm necessarily against the product that would come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kilburg? Marx?
I had a question on stormwater.
Microphone.
I had a question on stormwater.
I believe that's germane to the...
Well, I'm asking, as it relates to, what footprint would reduce the potential for stormwater of the two that we're looking at here now that you're discussing?
Well, the R6 district allows for a higher lot coverage, so more impervious surface, but that being the case, the stormwater management would be designed to accommodate for that additional runoff.
What is the situation as it relates to our infrastructure in that area? I know that, I vividly remember the major storm, I believe it was in 98 or 97 or 98. It was the same weekend that the plane went in off of Long Island, and we had a 15-inch rain.
It was July 18th, 1996.
96, okay, I was close. But anyhow, that area probably suffered some of the most severe flooding in all of Geneva as a result of that storm. And what improvements in infrastructure have we made in that area to deal with stormwater over the last 20 years? Could someone bring me up to speed on?
I'm going to have to interrupt you. I'm not sure that that's germane to the zoning discussion. I think that's our, I think it's a key question, I think it's an excellent question, I think it's a question that needs to be flushed out completely. I just don't know that this is the item for it.
Is it item?
I believe it will be on I, should the zoning change. So I appreciate the question, and it's one that needs to be addressed thoroughly, so...
But, can I finish?
Sure.
So for engineer and public works are here, I guess I'd be interested in what improvements and what enhancements have taken place. Now, I know the flooding that we experienced in Sherwood, those were corrected as related to the retention-detention pond, where the water was backing under Western Avenue, and it was invasive to some of the homes west of Western Avenue. But I'd like a clearer understanding of what's transpired over the last 20 years. And again, you don't have to answer that right now, but that's something I...
Could I rephrase the question, maybe, and make it a little fair question as it relates to this? Whether this was single-family or multifamily, would it still need to have the infrastructure improved?
There you go.
Any type of development there? That's a fair question for staff, I think, for, at this point, without specifics.
My understanding is that that stormwater system is really aged and is in a pretty dire state.
That's a fair question in general. Will this have to be improved regardless?
Well, with any, I'm being asked two different questions here. I'm being asked the question by the chair and I'm being asked the question by Alderman Kilburg. Which would you like me to address?
Question from the chair, of course. Yeah.
I was assuming, I wanted to make sure I was correct. Whether or not it's a single-family development or a multifamily development, because it's a greenfield, there will be infrastructure improvements that are necessary, mandatory for those to meet the needs. If you win with a single-family, because there is more pervious ground, meaning turf grass, to absorb rainfall, the off-site runoff calculations are different, and there's different regulations within the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance, which would apply. The assumption would be, and it's a fairly logical assumption, that if you own with single-family homes, because you have more pervious surface available, is that the detention facilities would be required, but they would probably be in a slightly smaller scale. But whether or not that would be visible to the public, I would doubt if the average person of the public would notice a slightly smaller detention pond. We're probably looking at miniscule differences in the grading.
Alderman Kilburg, is that?
I guess I'm wondering what's happening downstream to move the water faster. Obviously, as we add rooftops, we're going to, and more driveways, more rooftops, we're going to be needing, we're going to be required to move more water. What do we have planned in that area as it relates to stormwater? Anything planned on the horizon?
Well, the key problem that the municipality is facing with its stormwater infrastructure, and this has been reflected within the strategic plan as adopted and updated last November with the city council, was to have staff pursue and bring forth a recommendation for a stormwater utility, and a comprehensive drainage plan for the entire community, not just for this area, but for the entire watershed of the city of Geneva. We have been working on that, we've secured a number of RFPs, and it's really a question of timing with the city council when we bring those forward. The drainage improvements within that area that have already been accomplished include upgrading the discharge of the existing northern detention facility north of the sub-Western Avenue substation to a 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe, which was previously an 8-inch clay tile, that runs underneath the railroad embankment to the east, and then basically runs along the east and then south edge of Achievers, discharging into the drainage channel roughly around Shady. In addition to that, there was a 48-inch storm sewer interceptor that was installed underneath Fargo Avenue, which has been in place for several years, and we have been trying to connect both through ditch work and/or underground improvements as the budget allows, which is funded strictly through, the storm system is strictly funded through the general fund, which, as we're all aware, is in interesting shape. So what funds we do have available are being addressed to address these as we, as resources allow.
Do you think the network, then, is sufficient to handle the addition of these 32 homes?
Well, again, the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance, which was approved by 2002, which I think you can look fundamentally throughout the entire community, and, for lack of a better word, Kane County, now is identified and requires that as these developments build up in greenfield sites, that they somehow prepare and provide onsite detention requirements so that the discharge from those facilities is not adversely impacting the downstream properties. We not only see that with residential units, but we've even seen that on the east side of town where we've had businesses have to put in underground detention facilities underneath their parking lots. It's become more and more common, especially in the more urban areas such as Aurora and Batavia, where those onsite detention requirements are being installed underneath their parking lots. The whole concept of the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance, to simplify a model ordinance, which is rather extensive, is to try to limit, and it's to limit the likelihood of having adverse impacts on downstream properties.
Any other questions?
So there isn't anything that we're looking at in the short term as it relates to stormwater in that immediate area, then, as far as enhancements?
When I started here two years ago, and I started previously...
I don't know what projects you have on the horizon here that might be beneficial.
We can't give you a list of defined projects, because, again, in order for us to prepare that comprehensive list of what needs to be done, we need to analyze the entire watershed of the city of Geneva, because it's not enough to simply say we need to have a bigger culvert underneath Route 31 to get the water moving into the Fox River fast enough. We need to know how much water is actually going through that culvert on Route 31, and is that including the flow that we're getting from Gray Street, which is coming from St. Charles? We need to account for that flow. We need to account how much water is being absorbed and discharged through Eagle Brook subdivision, how much water is going through the Miller Pond on SSA 4, if that's preventing the Eagle Brook subdivision from discharging in an appropriate manner. So that's why it's very critical that we take a comprehensive view of the entire community. And we're starting to really straggle off, but if you're going to indulge me, I'm going to keep going. So I can't tell you what needs to be fixed, because we've identified a number of areas that need attention. But because we have extremely limited resources, what we're very concerned about is that by addressing a localized drainage issue, are we causing more harm somewhere else because we're not looking at the entire community at one time?
Thank you. Alderman Cummings? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Marx is next, I'm sorry. Thanks.
Indulge me if it's off-topic, I ask you to stop, but since the traffic impact study is up there, I just have a general question. Just general. David, was the traffic impact study reviewed by our outside consultants? That's the question I have. If you think that's not germane, that's fine.
It was not reviewed by outside consultants, and it's not really a detailed traffic impact study, which is why we didn't consult to have it reviewed. Using the ITE trip estimations, I mean, we can look that up, and we verified those numbers, we didn't need to consult with...
But even with, you know what, I'm going to let him go.
Thank you.
It's going to get too detailed.
Alderman Cummings and Alderman Maladra?
This is just a comment I have about the water flow in this property in particular. in this property in particular, not related to the developer buying this property. I've been out in the area since sixty-nine. Um, I think a lot of people here will, will remember, uh, the Hillside Strangle and, and how after three years of, um, reconstruction and reconfiguration, we moved a problem, uh, a few miles to the east. Uh, my worry with the water is that we put in a tremendously efficient system just off of Western Avenue so that we'll never see it underwater. And I have seen that greenhouse property, um, underwater and water onto Western Avenue. And we, we take that problem and shift it to right around Fargo and Thirty-One. And, and that's my worry. And it, and it sounds like, um, perhaps there isn't enough information within the city about water flow, stormwater flow through the system to give me a decent surety factor that we will not be moving the water problem from Western Avenue, ten blocks east over to Thirty-One and Fargo. So that's kind of bouncing around in my head right now. Thank you.
Okay, again, but for clarities, for this item that we're on in H, as it relates to zoning and the lot coverage that we are considering approving, city staff has indicated that in order to deal with that stormwater runoff, you do have the ability to do it with this zoning, um, without much, it, it, it's, it would, does not present an insurmountable problem for you to deal with the zoning if it was changed to R, R seven, R six, as opposed to leaving it as R one. I, I mean, that's, we're trying to- I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into the specifics of the project. I'd like to key, I think that's coming, I, I understand what you're saying, but in the context of changing the zoning, is that, is, is what Alderman Cummings saying, is that a potential threat that he would not want to? I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I think that's where you're going with it.
Yeah, increased lot co- increased lot coverage, which, you know, if it's going R six from R one, it's sort of, it's, it's an assumed, it's an assumption that we're going to have increased lot coverage. So with increased lot coverage, can we handle the water flow from there with improvements in that particular area and not affect in a negative way some areas slightly, literally, uh, downstream?
I'm confident that under the terms of the stormwater, um, ordinance that's in place now, whatever zoning you choose for this parcel, it can meet the terms of that stormwater ordinance. In fact, at four-thirty tonight, I got the third review from our stormwater consultant back and we're down to like four minor comments as far as the plan that's been presented so far. Um, there are no major roadblocks as far as this property being able to manage their stormwater.
And, and the property downstream?
They're not required to study downstream. They're looking at their, their development and they can manage their stormwater.
That's my, that, that's the Hillside Strangler analogy. Thank you.
Mr. Babaco.
Just to clarify, that's Brian Schieber, the city engineer. For everybody else in the room that doesn't know who they are other than the twelve of us. Uh, the, the release rates from the detention ponds are designed in such that they have, the detention facilities have to mimic the current greenfield conditions. Now, that can be on a volumetric release or it can be on a time release. So in essence, city engineer Schieber is absolutely correct in his assessment. This site can handle the detention requirements, be it single-family or multifamily. Because it's the detention, it's the release from the detention facilities, much as you've observed in the Eaglebrook subdivision, or in the Miller subdivision, or in the detention facilities, uh, off of East Side Drive. The modern detention facilities are designed to limit the existing drainage characteristics of that site. So in theory, everything's working correctly. The ponds are being maintained, which is our job, and my staff does a pretty darn good, good job maintaining these facilities. That the discharge rates from that structure up to a certain design standard, which is called for under Kane County Stormwater Ordinance, which is what we strive to, the discharge rates from that detention facility would mimic what is being discharged into the existing infrastructure at the current time.
Thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
Uh, initially, my comment was gonna have nothing to do with drainage, but since the topic came up. Um, it is, it is perhaps the issue that we face with, with any proposal on the, on the greenhouse property. So I need to kind of understand what you just said. My hope has been, since before these guys came to us, um, that whatever improvements were made to this property would, would include stormwater management, which would be an improvement to the area over the existing chaotic situation, which is basically no stormwater management. Do, do I understand what you just said correctly to say that the benchmark for any stormwater management is really just the same crappy situation that exists currently? You, you said the greenfield discharge rate. Well, it's a greenfield now and we know that there are frequently problems with that discharge rate.
They are, the, when, when you're developing a greenfield site, be it this one, be it the Woodland subdivision on Ray Street with Madeline Roth, be it the, uh, Riverbank Labs project, the opportunity that's presented with the development is to bring some sort of semblance and order to a chaotic situation. Right now, for example, let's look at the Riverbank Lab site. Uh, basically, it splits about two-thirds of it draining to the south to the Hooten Mifflin site and the other third of the site draining into a depressed area. I, I'm reluctant to call it a, a, a detention facility, where then it percolates into the soil. Uh, it's uncontrolled either way.
Right.
Uh, the release rates or the infiltration rates into the soil are directly determined. If we've had a hot, dry summer, that water just sucks into the ground, lickety-split. If we've had a saturated spring, it will sit there for days. So when these greenfield sites develop, it gives us an opportunity through the grading plan to channelize that water either into dedicated underground collection systems, which then discharge into a detention facility, where then it's held for a certain amount of time, or through mass earth grading to force that water through natural or through artificial grading plans to bring that water to a designated spot, to avoid the rather chaotic seam of it just dumping onto Western Avenue or dumping into the former U P, uh, or I shouldn't say U P, I don't wanna drag them into it, but the former railroad embankment to the east. This is, this is the opportunity, this is the opportunity that, that staff sees is to introduce those civil improvements to address a chaotic or to try to at least bring some sense of order. We can't fix every problem, uh, but developers would balk at that cost.
Right, well, I-
But we, we try to take advantage of this opportunity to bring some sense of order to a, for lack of a better word, uncontrolled system.
Right. So I was, I was just concerned after your last comment that, that really, we were just striving for basically do no harm and basically, but, but what we're aiming for, as you said, is to bring some order to the existing chaos. And that's not necessarily a function of this development, but that's, that's what we would strive for, whether it was R one development or an R six development.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question, please? Specifically to clear this discussion up. Correct. Uh, thank you for having us this evening. My name's Scott Barron-Brugge, Director of Land Acquisition with KABNANIAN. I'd like to invite Eric Lord from Atwell up as well. Uh, we've heard some questions over the last few minutes regarding whether we're gonna be required to move more water downstream. Um, we've heard what improvements are in the works to improve the condition or the capacity of, of that infrastructure. And we've heard, you know, what standards are we being held to in the way that our stormwater management is being designed? So first and foremost, we're designing for a net reduction in peak runoff during the most impactful rain events. These are, are ten, twenty, hundred-year storms, okay? There are two standards that must be met, uh, not just the standard that was described by Public Works of, um, not increasing runoff from the existing condition. There's also a second standard that holds you to a specific release rate per acre. That second standard is actually what we're being held to because it's the most restrictive of those two standards. So in this case, that CFS per acre, we have just over seven acres, would be the same whether it's, uh, the zoning that's being proposed, R six, or an R one development. That would be the, uh, the critical runoff rate that we're being held to. So if we can show the net impact of the, the more restrictive modeling that was performed. So to the east property line, which is the railway spur that Public Works described, we accept that runoff to the site in the existing and proposed condition. So there's zero runoff to the east. Um, runoff is accepted from the south as well, so there's zero runoff to the south. And what we see on Western Avenue is a, a net reduction of peak runoff in the hundred-year storm of seventy-five percent. And what we see is a reduction of ninety-five percent of peak runoff to the north. So do we know what's going to be the impact downstream? We know that our seven-plus acres of tributary area will have a net benefit of downstream because we're reducing that peak runoff, we're allowing the downstream infrastructure to clear and releasing at a controlled rate, um, so that whatever issues there may be downstream are certainly benefited by, uh, what we're, what we're proposing upstream. Um, Eric, if you have any clarifications?
No, I think you said it quite well, actually. Um, I think the thing to keep in mind is that, uh, the site as it, as it exists today, there's, there's really no stormwater control out there at all. So, you know, you have runoff that's coming in from the south, from the east, and it's all collecting on the property and, you know, remember, this is primarily clay around here, so there's not a lot of infiltration that happens. So that water collects on the property and then makes its way on the, to, uh, Western Avenue and into the storm sewer system. So what we're doing, and you can look at this exhibit, it's a good, it's a good one, that whole blue area, we're now taking all of that area in, bringing it into our storm sewer system, conveying it to the pond and holding it and releasing it at a very restricted rate. So the reduction in what, um, the, the storm sewer system in Western Avenue experiences is, is significant. You can see the reduction numbers there. And those are real numbers, those are numbers that have been, uh, reviewed by city, by county. Um, so hopefully that gives, um-
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Simoni.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I guess I'm having some issues here with, uh, what Alderman Cummings had brought up earlier regarding the zoning, uh, for the two and three-family residential with no, uh, safety net in the event that they decide to make a change. And, um, it's, that, that's bothering me that, uh, that is, that, that we don't have some sort of control over that. And it's, I mean, and it's not, obviously not a developer issue, it's not, it's a, it's a zoning issue. And I'm hard-pressed to support this without having a assurance that the development is gonna be what the development has proposed it to be. Um, and if what David had said, that we really don't have any recourse, um, that halfway through the project, they can shift to a three-family residential, I, I can't, I can't in good conscience, uh, support going in with an assumption that this is what's gonna happen with an outcome that's completely different with no controls. So this is putting a real roadblock in for me, so I don't know if the, what we can do or if we can do anything, but-
That was actually gonna be my comment, the one I said where I wasn't gonna talk about drainage, I was gonna talk about something else instead. That was, that was it. I think we're asking the neighborhood to accept a fair amount of change as it is. I think that it would be incumbent upon us, if at all possible, to ensure that what, what we say is gonna, what we say change is gonna bring about there is in fact what happens there. The idea that it could be something completely different halfway through is-
But before I recognize Alderman Bruno, I think that is much more of a crux at this point, at this discussion about zoning than specifics about the stormwater management. And I know that Mr. Twusdale will probably give us all of his assurances about two units, but truly at this point, this is a matter for the council to consider internally rather than from an applicant at this moment. So if you please sit tight for just one minute, I, I'd like to recognize a couple of the other Aldermen. And that would be Alderman Bruno.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Pardon me. Um, a couple of things. Uh, one, uh, I just wanna wrap my head around the, uh, how stormwater management for any development is, uh, is put in place. Uh, I guess it would be either Mr. Babaco or Mr. Schieber that might wanna answer this or, or affirm my, um, my conceptualizing of this. Uh, all of these types, all of this improvement for stormwater management for any development is, uh, based on, uh, one-hundred-year rain events? Is that a fair?
For the sizing of the basins.
Okay, I got an affirmative nod. Um, okay, so, um-
Please, yeah, come up to the mic, please.
Come on up.
Come on up, Brian.
You can't hide, Brian.
For the sizing of the basins, that's correct.
Sizing the basin, this is the, the one-hundred-year event. Um, uh, within that scope of the one-hundred-year event, it sounds like this dramatically improves localized flooding and downstream flooding, if it truly meters this outflow. Um, now, if we have a hundred-and-fifty-year event, um, you know, it's, I don't know if it's worth bringing up, if we have a hundred-and-fifty-year event, it's gonna be, be a mess everywhere.
That's correct.
Effectively, at a hundred-and-fifty-year event, this then behaves like greenfield. All that water, we've captured everything, ground is saturated, everything's pouring out. Is that a fair analysis?
Sure, keep going.
Um, okay, so I'm, I'm pretty confident then that whatever gets developed here with current standards is going to improve, uh, our flooding events. I don't know that that will affect the Dunston neighborhood. I think that's, uh, uh, different issues. Seems like water's coming from Dunston to this property. Um, the other thing which, uh, I might've lost that point, I had two. Um, I'll pass for now.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Cummings.
So I wanna, I wanna circle back to the, um, two units, two single-family units versus three. Um, and discuss a thought that I have about this. Whether, whether the public is, uh, in favor of this or, uh, against this, I believe that they will be, uh, less in favor of a potential of a three-unit home than they would be a two-unit home. They may be absolutely opposed to both, but they will never be, um, more welcoming to a three-unit home than they would to a two-unit home. And so in my mind, risk-reward again, I think that the three units represents, um, a magnified risk that we may not be considering in the same manner as someone in the public that's already very hesitant, uh, to okay a, a two-unit home. And the, if the potential exists for someone to go out and build a three-unit home under R six, that, that risk is, I would imagine, for most of the people that are against this, absolutely unacceptable.
unacceptable. And so how do you mitigate or eliminate that risk to lessen the worry of the people that are already skittish at best about this? And I think the answer is that we need to consider R6, splitting R6 zoning into two separate categories, creating another zoning category for two units. I think that would provide some surety to the people that are skittish or on the line. Some people don't want it, absolutely do not want anything in there except single families. I understand that. But if this is coming up now, it'll come up in the future, and I see that there's a potential for an improvement to be made within our zoning that I think will placate some of the people out there that are worried about a three-unit building.
Thank you. But before I recognize Alderman Marks and Alderman Bruno, apparently got a second thought come back into his head. I think you're moving towards potentially a friendly amendment, perhaps, to this item. And before we consider the bifurcation or creating of another unit and vote on it, I think there's a lot of information, and perhaps the mayor could give us his opinion about, you know, what it would entail, or perhaps Mr. DeGroot could do that. But we'll circle back to that, and I'll recognize Rich Marks.
I was going down the same path Alderman Cummings was going down, so I will wait for now.
Okay. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually going exactly down that path, too. What struck me during this, it seems like we've, we typically are looking at developing these parcels as PUDs. So we've gotten used to having all these specific controls. I think this is the first time in my tenure here, looking at one of these developments to rezone by right, so that indeed they do have that type of flexibility. I think, for what it's worth, I am thinking we really need this type of, a single-story or first-floor master living product. But if that also means three-story townhomes, I think while, or vertical living, I think R6 would allow some vertical living options, and I don't think that fits well into our long term. So I think there is, I think we would really be best served by splitting that zoning somehow. I would be very uncomfortable that we try to define that here tonight. We, you know, we don't do our best work when we're defining ordinance at the dais here. How that plays into this right here and what we're voting on, I don't know, and you'll probably find out when you call the roll.
Well, I think, before we get to that point, what I'm hearing, and I think there is some consensus, and there is interest by this committee to explore what the options are to give us the control to ensure that this remains as a two-unit development that the current zoning that we are considering does not allow. It sounds easy to do that, and my, what I'm being told is that it is not that simple. So before we entertain perhaps a friendly amendment, let's explore what that might entail. And I'd ask Mr. DeGroot or anybody knowledgeable, on behalf of the city at this point, to explain what it would take to have another zoning ordinance put in place that would address the concerns of the committee at this time.
From a zoning perspective, it would require withdrawing this current application for the zoning change and either crafting a new zoning ordinance that only allows for duplexes or...
What process would that take?
I mean, they're kind of thinking out loud.
He's on the fly there.
It could be an amendment to the existing zoning, or you could approve the zoning even and come back with a planned unit development request, but currently, the proposal doesn't meet our standards for a planned unit development. So that's really why it wasn't processed as a planned unit development. There's typically not conditions of approval on a zoning request. Without our attorney here, I don't know if your attorney's present, if we could do...
Yeah, let's, if...
A form of a development agreement or something.
Let's hear your proposal to address this at this point.
I know that you fully, Vince Rosanova, on behalf of the petitioner of Cahovenian, I know that everybody fully expects me to stand up here and say, "We're not going to do the three units." And I get that. But we are committed to the duplexes, we'll sign a development agreement, we'll accept a condition of the rezoning. We have no intent to do three units. The plan that's before you tonight is what we're going to build, if we're lucky enough or fortunate enough to be approved. Condition of the rezoning ordinance, that only duplexes on the 13 lots, as shown on the development plan, shall be permitted. We'll sign a separate development agreement, that if any changes are made to that plan, those duplex units, we have to come back to this council for consideration. We're committed, and any way to do that, we'll effectuate that, to give everybody the peace of mind that they need.
Thank you. I'll throw this open to the committee. I'm sorry.
Wow, so...
Mr. Tuzdale, do you wish to speak to the committee or if not?
Yeah, and I'll be very, yes, that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, I'll be very brief, just to follow up on Vince's comment. Again, we propose this as a comprehensive plan, I guess, you know, looking at the amendment to the plan, looking at the rezoning, and looking at the subdivision. We certainly understand that all this goes together, which is why it's a little difficult, and I know we're splitting them up, which makes it a little more complicated. But in this issue, in addition to what Vince had discussed, right now, in the ordinance as drafted that I've seen for the approval, for the next one, for the actual approval of the plat of subdivision, it does have a condition in there that specifically approves our architecture as proposed, which is that specific building with a two-unit building on there. So that is part of the ordinance as it's currently written. If we need to put some additional language in there...
In addition, you'll agree to the additional language.
We'd certainly be willing to do that, too, but there is that condition in there right now. We fully expected those types of conditions, you know, so we didn't have to be concerned about these issues.
Yeah, we fully expect you to agree to that.
So, okay.
Thanks. Alderman Maladra.
So my issue with that is, you know, we're talking about what if a change is made midstream due to unforeseen circumstances? One of those changes could be a change in ownership. So I appreciate anything you're willing to sign, but I don't know that that necessarily goes far enough to alleviate the concerns that we're talking about up here, which is along those lines. If whatever change happens that would cause rethinking along these lines under the R6 zoning, if it's you guys and we have this signed agreement, then you're stuck. But if it's not you guys, whoever it is, could then do the three units that we've been talking about, or we would take it on a case-by-case basis or lot-by-lot basis, which would, could possibly lead us to a situation we don't want to be in because you said it doesn't have to come, or may not have to come before the city council. So while I appreciate what you just said, I don't know that that leaves us with the level of protection that we're talking about here.
Thank you. Please.
Just briefly, so the agreement, the condition, the ordinances, they run with the land, they bind all successor owners. We would be happy to record that, so therefore, it does bind all successor owners and avoid that legitimate concern as well.
I'd sure would like our attorney to pick on that. I'm not a lawyer.
But I'm suddenly...
Give me one second, Mr. Sifond.
Carl Sifond, again. I think what you would have, if push came to shove, you would, it would be unconstitutional to require the applicant here to do something in R7 that's not required by the ordinance. It'd be a due process violation, even party of one.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll recognize you in one second. Part of the discussion that we just had here, the ex parte discussion, was this is not a group of lawyers sitting up here right now, we're about to hear from another one, I suspect, too, that we, you know, we would have this, you know, prior to, this is a recommending body. Anything that is discussed or any type of agreement, obviously, would be subject to the city attorney's approval or review. It would not be fair nor appropriate for us to pass judgment on such matters on the fly right now. So Mr. Condisak, the floor is yours.
We're here because you invited us here, and we have a right to be here. The Open Meeting Act allows us to be here. And I talked to Don about this. When I objected to it, I said, "The moment you change this from R1 to R6, anybody can come in here and put in whatever they want that complies with your R6." Do you understand that? Does everybody understand that? Once you switch it, anybody can come in, they can leave, and then somebody can come in and put three, it's not three units, by the way, it's three dwellings, three houses. You can stack them, you can put them all together, you can do whatever you want under your zoning here. So Don said to me, he said, "Well, what if we put restrictions?" And I said, "Well, aren't we putting the cart before the horse?" I mean, we're here discussing these things. He comes up and he says it runs with the land. It does not run with the land. It doesn't bind any future developer, anybody else who purchases the property. The moment this council agrees to change from R1 to R6, as Mr. Sifond said, you are constitutionally obligated to go forward with the R6. That's the problem I have, Don, is that there's not a plan here. When they put up these drawings for all you to look at, and they say, "Look at these beautiful houses," they are not required to build those beautiful houses. That's not what you're voting on. You're not voting on their beautiful houses. You're voting on changing our property in our community from an R1 to an R6. It has no purpose being there. Forget about the flooding and all that. Anybody that's been at the end of Fargo and 31, you're telling me we have a good flooding program? I don't know how much that cap weighs, but when you drive by on a rainy day, it's three feet in the air, okay? So the flooding, forget about it. You're changing zoning here, okay? And you can't do it, you can't sit here and try to tic-tac and hopscotch and put this here and this here and say, "Well, if we do this, we do this." That's not how it works. I can't believe we're discussing, "Well, maybe we can do a friendly amendment." Did the notice that you put up out there talk about a friendly amendment? So the entire community of Geneva could come in and see that the city council is actually discussing a friendly amendment to change our zoning? What are we doing? This is poorly planned. It's a bad idea.
Thank you, Chairman Reddick. I couldn't probably have said most of this better than Mr. Condisak, but I do feel we're not here tonight to talk about how to make it work. We're here to talk about what the, what your constituents are telling you. And I have to acknowledge Mr. Singer as the most senior member here, and what a wonderful thing you said. You said you heard from your constituents, you've considered everything, and you're supporting what your constituents are asking for. And that's why all of you are in office. That's why you've all been elected, to listen to us. I appreciate Mr. DeGroot's staff recommendations and the superintendent of Public Works, but we live in this community, as you do. And I don't know if all staff does, and that doesn't, that's not really a consideration, but I just, you know, ask that you think about that. We're here, and a lot of people have left because it's getting fairly late, we're here to let you know how we feel about this, not an amendment to an R6 zoning. It's, do, is this going to fit in the community? And I'm curious how many of you have had a senior citizen approach you in the last six months, 12 months, and say, "You know what? We really need different housing." I'm curious.
I have a number of calls on that.
Okay, okay.
Just open up with this project.
Okay, and they would purchase this product?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I've heard from a number of people, as many foreigners against this, so you know.
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate that. I'm curious why we have to follow other communities, though, in attaining to this 55 percent housing diversity. I mean, Geneva is unique, not that we exclude anybody, I think we include anyone who would like to come here, but I don't think we have to follow other standards that other communities have put in place. And a point to Mr. Maladra, I think that the riverbank and the Park North, whatever it's called, Park Place are different. Because both those communities are not surrounded by R1, single-family. River south or north is commercial, primarily, probably three-quarters of it's commercial. The lab and the other buildings that are on there, the Hilton Mufflin Publishing, and then the development up here on 31, you've got the park to the north, and you've got the cemetery to the west, and then there's industrial west of that. So I don't think they're anywhere near similar. I think they're vastly different than what this proposed plan is and the location of this proposed plan. And then I think the last comment that I would just like to make is that don't focus on the engineering of this. Focus on how this is going to change the community. Focus on 32 units, 32 units on that site. That's a lot. Don't worry about, I'm not worried about the retention, detention, although, I mean, it's a concern, but the engineers will work through that. Look at what other impacts this is going to have on us. Don't get sidetracked and get baited and switched into this. I just ask you respectfully to consider that. And then the last comment I would like to just note is, and with all due respect to the developers, I went online today and Googled this company. I don't know, have any of you done that? Have any of you looked at the reviews?
I went and viewed their product.
And again, the reason I mention this is, I have, you know, I have review after review here by employees and hundreds of their customers. And the number-one thing that comes out is honesty and integrity. Number one, even their employees, their employees are saying it time and time again.
We're stringing a little bit off.
No, we're not, no, we're not, Mr. Reddick. We're not stringing because we are...
I respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Augustine, but go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate that. We are making decisions here based on what we're being told, okay, and promises. And we have, we have to trust that that's, that they're going to, that they're going to stand by that, okay? We don't have any, I think, probably, history of that. But employees and hundreds, if not thousands, the recent class-action suit, have stated differently. So again, I'm not saying that they're coming in here being dishonest with this, but there's hundreds of people that have said that that's been a problem. So when you're considering this, think about that, okay? Not the friendly amendment, that's a total different issue, and I think that let's focus on what this is going to do to the community.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra.
Yeah, so I would like to just state a few things. My vision of what your elected officials are here for is to represent our constituents, but it's to represent our constituents of today as well as our constituents of tomorrow. We're not making short-term decisions here. We're making long-term decisions, and many times, the sentiment of today gives way to the practicality and reasonableness of tomorrow. Alderman Singer is listening to his constituents in this case, and I admire that, but I also want to remind everybody that Alderman Singer is our chief proponent of affordable senior housing. The human cry that we're hearing today about $400,000 properties is nothing compared to the human cry that we're going to hear when you put the word "affordable" in front of a development. And I wonder, at that point, whether or not the strength of our convictions about what is right for the long-term best interests of the community will drive our decisions as opposed to a reaction to the yelling and anger and frustration that we're experiencing today. I agree with Mr. Augustine that there are differences in the surroundings of Riverbank, Park Place, and others. One thing that is quite similar, though, is the strength of the sentiment expressed by the neighbors in each of those developments. And in each of those developments, as you know, the council made a decision, and that decision, I believe, was based not on what's best for us, seemingly best for us today, but what's best for us in the long term. The gauge or the benchmark that we're using is not what Hovanian Homes tells us, not what St. Charles tells us, or Batavia tells us. It's what we concluded ourselves after engaging cooperative... ourselves after engaging cooperatively in a study with neighboring communities about the changing demographics in our area and the changing demand for housing stock. We're not reacting to, we don't, oh, we don't have to be like St. Charles, we don't have to be like Batavia. We're reacting to what we, as a city council, and I believe everybody up here was part of that, I may be wrong, but what we, the city council, believe the changing nature of the community is going to be in the future. So, whether we support this change or not, whether it goes forward or not, it's based on long-term vision and our conscience as far as what's right for us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good speech. Jim Manna, 1254 Galway Court. This question was asked earlier about the Plan Commission on the previous question and who voted and what the vote was. Nobody's asked that question. Can I ask that question of what was the vote and why was there negative votes?
It was six to three on this topic, I believe, David. Would you like to explain?
It was five to four on this topic.
Five to four on this, then six to three on the next.
Correct. And again, the, the understanding I have after following up with the commissioners is that three of them had concerns about the, the attached product adjacent to single-family. And then there was one commissioner that was concerned with the overall stormwater management in the area, confident that this site would be designed appropriately, but knowing there were issues in the area wasn't, wasn't comfortable moving forward.
Thank you.
Well, we didn't have a lot of time to get the word out on this subject, but we were able to contact a lot of people. And I'd like you, this is the question that we asked, is do you want the city to change the zoning on this piece of property from R1 to R6? Everybody couldn't make it, but they were willing to sign petitions. And if you look at these petitions, I think what's interesting is perhaps something you understand very well, how long people have lived here in Geneva. May I?
Please. Thank you.
And I guess what you're saying is, in order to keep those people here in Geneva, we need this kind of a zoning, because we're just talking about zoning. And I, I think what you inherently believe is that if we put up 12 houses on this property, they wouldn't sell. That's bunk. You know that's bunk. You know that if we put up single-family homes, they'd sell just like that. They'd sell for more money than what these houses are going to go for. And by the way, what's this all about, anyway? It's about $12, $13 million, because that's how much money they're going to get gross for putting up this stuff, all right? If, if we had a home builder come in here, if we could invite a home builder to come in and build, they would, and those houses would go quickly. We don't need old people's homes. We need places for people to live. And they could live on this property in a single-family community perfectly well. I urge you not to change the zoning on this property. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it, thank you. I, I think at this point, it's appropriate, one moment, please. I think it's appropriate this time to circle back with the committee. The question is to whether or not we have the ability to amend this has been questioned with a friendly amendment, the ability, the, the question has been brought up about constitutionality. I think at this point, it's only prudent, the chair would entertain a motion to continue this matter of the discussion on the zoning to a date certain, so that we do have the opportunity to not attempt to do this on the fly without a, a better footing for what the ramifications and what legally we are able to do. It serves little sense for us to continue, I believe, to go down the path of where we're going right now, and it would be best to risk, to pick up this conversation after that question is cleared up.
I would make that motion to a date certain of August 22nd.
Second.
It's been motioned in a second. Mr. DeGroot?
It's, it's okay to hold the meeting without me, but I, I will not be, it's okay to hold the meeting without me, but...
It's okay to cancel a vacation, too.
Tell that to my wife.
Albo.
I won't be available on the 22nd.
Yeah. Would the motioner in second be willing to have a special count next week?
I would, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Lucky you. We have a motion and a second to continue the matter of item H till a special committee of the whole meeting to October 15th, which will pre, or August 15th, which will precede the regularly scheduled city council meeting. That time would be?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. We have a motion, we have a second. Please take the roll.
Can you clarify again what exactly this, that would, we, we'll just have more information next week about whether...
Continuing the discussion.
We'll continue the discussion after we've had time to confer.
All right, thank you.
Point, point of order.
Please.
When will the public be able to continue to provide their input?
Throughout the whole process.
And so, there's going to be one more meeting next week?
Yeah, it'll be a continuation of it, yeah. It would just be, yeah, we're bumping up the time. It would be a continuation of this meeting. It would be able, it would give us the ability to entertain more public comment, to have more input, and to address the possibility of splitting the zoning in a, in a more concise manner. That's the purpose.
Point of order.
Excuse me. Alderman Singer?
Yes. To clarify your, your commentary, are you then, are we then going to be able to address this issue with a clarification from some legal, through a legal ramification as such?
Well, it would, it would be my intent to have the city attorney be present, be brought up to date on these discussions, and be present while we continue these discussions. Unfortunately, the city attorney is on vacation. We were unable to, to, his anniversary, and we could not bring the, the backup city attorney to, up to speed quick enough to be here tonight. So, we're kind of at a bit of a disadvantage, so.
All right, thank you.
That's the purpose of it.
Point of order.
It's Monday night, you're talking about.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, items I and J will be continued.
Yes, items I and J will both be continued.
Point of order then.
Is that the motioner's understanding?
Yes.
And the secondary agrees?
Yes. And point of order, will, will those votes still be bifurcated, or will be making those votes that same evening with city council? Because I'd, I'd rather them still be bifurcated that we have a week from that, this next special count to...
It's going to be published, doesn't it?
Yeah.
You need two weeks.
Yeah, let the city administrator, I mean, you run into legalities about publishing. Go ahead.
I believe the question by Alderman Bruno was, if we consider this as a special committee of the whole on August 15th, will the matter also be published for consideration by the regularly scheduled council on the 15th? I believe Alderman Bruno would prefer that a special council be held on the 22nd, so that there is that standard week allotment for consideration, digestion, and what have you.
That is correct, sir.
And that is the intent?
That is my intent.
The motioner agrees with that?
Yep.
Do we have a motion in a second? Please call a roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Skipping down to item J, consider draft resolution proposing the increase of rate of non-home rule sales tax in the city of Geneva. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion marked. Second, Maladra? Wait, we'll give the room a moment.
Item, item J is up for discussion. Would anybody care to kick off our remaining 16 minutes unless we decide to go beyond that?
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was under the understanding in our last conversation about this, that this was, we were going to defer this referendum vote to November of 2017, because it was too, too quick of a time period for this November, along with the fact that the chamber said they would not be prepared to be able to support it, and that we didn't want to go and run two referendums with the library, possibly the library, in April. And maybe I am confused.
It was not my recollection that that was agreed at that time, but I'll defer to the council.
I was going to say, the, the recollection was you all directed me to bring the ordinance forward tonight, the resolution for consideration for further discussion.
Okay.
So, that, and again, you can, you can, you can defer it again, you can do whatever you want, but that was the direction I was given at the work session, was to bring it back tonight. Because if you did want to do it this November, you have to pass it by August 22nd.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
We're asking for a plan of action. Alderman Maladra?
Part of the, part of the sense of urgency, I think, surrounding this is the possibility that the window in which we can use these funds for something other than infrastructure could quite possibly close, correct?
Currently, the way the statute's written, you can only use it for municipal operations through December 31st, 2020. And with a November 2017 election, you would not collect the tax until July of 2018.
So, is what I just said remotely correct? Okay, thank you. You were confirming. All right. So, my, my preference, although, although it's not a strong preference, if this is the way the council wants to go, I will support it. But my preference would be to go with a, a, a move that would enable us, give us more discretion over how we use the funds. We've seen some light being shed on, on places for eating tax and food and beverage tax by other communities, and I'm not saying we need to be like other communities, but I do think that we can take a, a moment and reflect on the lessons that are there to be learned by these other communities. The impact to those businesses has been non-existent, the negative impact to those businesses has been virtually nonexistent. People aren't leaving Naperville to come to Geneva to dine. They're not leaving St. Charles to come to Geneva to drink. So, I think that personally, I would go for a places for, the places for eating tax that we discussed originally, because it gives us more discretion over how we use those funds. But saving that as an option, I would support the sales tax. But I do, I do believe if we want to be able to use that for something other than infrastructure, we have to move quickly.
Hold on for one second. Could we have a motion first to approve what's, what's proposed before we?
We do.
Do we have a, do we have a motion? It's getting long. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Other discussion. Alderman Bruno?
Just briefly, we've been circling this for so long, and I think we're hitting up against this thing where the perfect is the enemy of the good. We, we, we have needs, and if this seems to have the most support, and I think we've got consensus, this seems to be the most palatable, I will support it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the deas? Comments from staff or anyone? Alderman Cummings?
I, you know, I would, I would like to see this. I know it's a little bit rushed. The, the, sorry, risk, war, the upside, the downside. There isn't too much downside to, to giving this a go now. The, if, if we wait, it could be 20-something months. We have the business community behind us on this. I, I think, I think it's a go, and I'd like to see, I thought we had the business community behind us. I think we do.
Yeah, I guess that's the question I would have.
We're getting to that.
I don't want to put words in people, but, but we did have some people saying, "Absolutely, we'll help you out if, if you go that route." Citywide is preferred, is preferential, preferred to something localized in the downtown business district and recreating one of those. I, I think it's a go. I'd like to see us do it. Thanks.
Alderman Burkhart?
I guess optimum for me would be to be able to do this in April and have the time to really build the coalition we need to and the education project, but I don't want to be on the same ballot as the library, asking for a referendum for a new building. So, I feel like we have to, we have to get some clarity on this, and we need to move forward. And if this fails, then we probably look at the places for eating tax. I will be disappointed, however, if we rush this onto the November ballot and then the library doesn't get a referendum on in April, but we can only move forward with the information we have now. So, thank you.
Anybody else from the deas? Mr. Marks?
I, I will say, I, I spoke that last time, that I think putting it on November ballot is too rushed, and it has too much of a possibility of failing just because we can't get the education out there. I spoke that last time, and I do now, and I would like to know how the business community feels, if the chamber has any input on that.
Anybody else from the deas? Mrs. Gaines, or anybody else care to weigh in at this point?
Jean Gaines, representing Geneva Chamber of Commerce. We absolutely support the referendum. We think it's too rushed. We're concerned that we can't get the word out. There will be not enough education to pass it. I guess my question would be, if it fails this time, would you put it on again in April? You have to ask, who's, who's the more important issue, the library or your needs? I don't know the answer to that, and I, I don't know how we could give it the time that it needs to go this November. I think the, the focus is going to be on the national election, so I don't know how much time people will spend listening to us.
The answer is, we can't put it on in April. There's a 23-month wait if we're unsuccessful in November.
Okay. So, we support it. We just don't know, any more than you do, whether this is the right time. I think Mr. Marks is right that it's rushed a little bit. If you can tell us how to help you, we'd be glad to do that.
Mr. Olson?
Michael Olson, 202 North Sixth Street in Geneva. I would like to echo what Jean had to say and really emphasize why I think we should put this on the April election and not the November election. Most people don't like taxes. That's just, we can kind of assume that. And you're going to have a lot of people coming out in the November election. They're not going to be informed about the issue. They're going to see on the ballot, raise taxes. They're just going to hit no. In the April election, our local municipal election, Alderman, mayoral, these are the people, the people that go out and vote at that one. They're the people that are concerned about our community, take the time to learn about what the issues are, and we have the opportunity to present a very valid case as to why we need to have that sales tax in this community at this time. We all know the problems that the state of government, the state of Illinois is having with us. We all can address the needs of our city, infrastructure, you know? Maybe we need to widen the sewer at, what, Fargo and 31, or something like this. We can demonstrate to the people that care about our community the need for this additional tax revenue. And I think we can do it most effectively in April. If we try and do it this November, I do believe we'll rush it. Then I think it's 23 months that we're SOL, so to speak. I think that we can make an effective argument in April, even if we are competing against the library district, because quite frankly, the needs of the city are more important than the needs of the library. And I mean, I, I use the library, I love the library, I have nothing against them. But if people have to pick one versus the other, I think we can present a better argument, and that we can make this sales tax, you know, referendum, I think we can get this passed. So, I would hope that you would consider not making it in November, but instead, putting it to our local elections will come up in April. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does our authorizing this or voting in the affirmative on this tonight, well, actually technically, next week, does, does that, does that tie us into November, or is that just authorization to submit that when?
My understanding is authorization, not tied.
You have to file the resolution by August 22nd. So...
Oh, so we're...
Essentially, it ties you into, now, the question was also whether you can withdraw that question. Again, we didn't get a clear answer. We tried. We believe that if you withdraw it before it's published, which is like October, that's probably, you can probably withdraw that. But by then, again, your action's been taken, so I think, I think if you're going to go forward, you want to go forward. I don't think you want to do a false... start.
I guess my, my comment, too, I mean, this didn't sneak up on us, we've had, we flushed this discussion out, we've had it for quite some time, I like the comment before, you know, we wait for perfection, we do nothing, it's time to, to, you know, to, to pick our unhappiness, I believe, we have to make a decision with it. You know, my, my, my thought and my question is, you know, that's a November election, it is August 8th, I mean, what is enough time? You know, my guess is, would 30 more days do it? Would, would 120 days to the election make or break it? Would, you know, what, what are the real obstacles, and I know that could be debated, but, you know, I think the practicality of it is, if the business community is really behind us, as they said they were when we deferred action on some other items, I, I think, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see, I guess, because if it does not pass, you know, we're all, we're working together, and we're, we'll all have to look for an alternate solution to our problems if it doesn't pass, so we're, we're all pulling this rope the same way. You know, how it's gonna be accomplished, will it have challenges, will it not be perfect? No doubt. Alderman Maladra?
Question for you, so we have to file on August 22nd, when we file, is that saying November or April, or is there a later date that we can file if we're going in April?
If you're going April, there's a later date to file, I don't, I don't have that information in front of me. I think it's also important to note that whether it's November or April, the tax will not be collected until July. Either way, the way the deadlines work to get it to the Department of Revenue, it won't be implemented until July 1st of 2017.
Okay, so it, it's interesting to me to separate the issue of how many people support the sales tax from the issue of how many people support the timing of the, of the, putting the item on the ballot, so I would be interested, I'd be interested in, in offering a friendly amendment to change this to a, a, from November ballot to an April ballot, just so I can see how many people are hung up on the timing.
Anybody care to second that?
Guess not. All right.
That close.
You didn't have to, I would have been.
Okay, we have a friendly amendment on the floor, and would you please restate it? It would be to basically change section two on the second page of what you have, page 111 in your packet, to the November or October, or I'm sorry, the April.
April.
April, April 2017, we'll fill in the actual date.
Correct.
And we have a second. Okay, discussion to the amendment. Mr. Simonian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought the whole reason for the citywide state tax was in lieu of the downtown business district tax, that we got consensus with the chamber and the downtown businesses, that they felt it should be citywide versus focused on the downtown business. I thought we had an understanding with them that said, if we would agree to go that route, they would support it and help get it passed. Otherwise, we also agreed that if we couldn't get it passed, that we may have to come and revisit the downtown business tax. Now, we've got folks from the chamber and the businesses saying, they can't accomplish that task by November, and should we go on the ballot in November and we fail, it's gonna be a hard argument to sit back here when they're standing at the podium and saying, well, you know, we agreed to this whole thing, but we told you we couldn't get it accomplished by this timeframe, so they're saying they can't, I mean, and, and what are we gonna do, say, well, too bad, too sad, you, you own the downtown business district tax now? And, and I don't think, I don't think it was, it's in the spirit by which it is, I mean, I don't think we have a, a fallback position to that if, if we for, if we cannot come to a concurrence, an agreement at the date, and I would say, if April, it's April, or push it back to the, the, the next November, but I definitely can't see doing it this November when the chamber has made it loud and clear that they can't support it for this November's election, so, thank you.
So I hear you are in support of the amended?
I'm in support of, I'm in support of not this November. I'm questioning whether I want to be on a, a ballot with another referendum, or just wait till the following November. And for me, it, it, it has nothing to do with use of funds, because there's no guarantee that they're not gonna extend that, that 2020 deadline to a further date, and even if those use of funds are for infrastructure, we can, we can reroute, I mean, it's, it's not like we're gonna sit back, oh God, I wish we didn't have infrastructure money because we have so, we have such a fine infrastructure, so the money can definitely be used, even if it's routed to infrastructure, but I still think that there may be an opportunity for that to be extended past 2020, so. So my answer is, long, long answer, I'm definitely not in support of this November, so it's either April and next November, next April, next November. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra?
I just want to point out that in terms of the amount of time available to us, this, this is the same amount of time that we had to successfully pass the sales tax referendum when we did it last time, so the, the issue is, in my mind, is not the amount of time that we have to prepare, it's the magnitude of the number of people coming to the election in November who are there for national interests and not local interest, that I think. So when I began, I was thinking November, because I want the discretion over the funds, but the focus on the election, we have a better chance of passing the referendum in April, I think.
Before we continue, we have reached the magic hour of 10 o'clock, is it a consensus among this group that we continue discussion on this matter till we have resolution, because we do have closed session after this?
Is it a big closed session?
That would become an open session if we had that discussion.
I'd like to continue.
Yeah.
Continue with it, okay, one minute, Mr. Leaven. Is there anyone else in the deists before I recognize Mr. Leaven? Alderman Burkhart?
The talk of pushing it back, I don't think there's a November 2017 election, so there's no, Illinois, at least in Illinois, it looks like there's some state, a couple gubernatorial in Virginia and New Jersey, but Illinois doesn't have any election scheduled for November 2017. Congressional would be on the evens, 2016, 2018. It'd be a really special election, I guess, then. All about sales tax.
We could CNN coverage.
Twenty-five, yeah, maybe.
Alderman Marks?
That might be method of your madness.
Thank you.
Craig, can you answer your question? Yes, I am in favor of putting this on a ballot, but I want it on a ballot where I really think it's going to win, and I'm not sure November would, will do it, and that's what I'm gonna say.
So my wish was, let's change this to be April.
Right.
Let's change it to April, let's vote on it, let's put it to bed and be done with it.
Yep, that's fine.
Mr. Leaven? He's drawing.
Scott Leaven, General Board of Chamber, I'm not sure any of us are gonna be real happy going to the polls in November. From that standpoint, it doesn't matter how many go, it's maybe everybody going. I just wanted to remind you that we came up with a six-month period that it takes to get something like this passed, doing coffees with people, sitting down with people in town, when we were up here the last time, asking the staff, if they put, if they started to work on a referendum and they did all the publicity necessary, how long would it take to really have an impact? And we were told, it takes six months to do it, so as we've gone around and asked, you know, when you have somebody that doesn't know anything about really the impact of the sales tax, if you're gonna do smaller coffees, one-on-one with people in town, it's just gonna take time to do that, and as you're getting into, we're less than 90 days away from the election, and so it's gonna be very difficult, we, we only have 15 members on our board, so, you know, we're gonna have to try and get people from the community and volunteers and others, you almost have to build a political team to go out there to disseminate information about what's the truth, and what are you hearing on the other side, and we've got to figure out some marketing materials to do that. We are 100% behind, we don't know any more than you do, whether it's gonna pass, but we're willing to give it a yeoman's effort, but we just don't think in 90 days you can accomplish, we started as soon as the day was over for Swedish days, planning for next Swedish days, so we take a year to plan every festival, it starts the day after the festival's over. To think that we can do something like this, to change people's mind in a short period of time, with the amount that has to be done, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't mean that we won't give it a good effort, but I just think it would be difficult, and I just, I don't think the tenor of the election coming up, I don't think people are gonna be walking into the polls saying, God, let's, let's be happy about voting no matter what happens, so, from that standpoint, it's not the number of people, it's just the atmosphere we're in right now, that may make us decide that it's not the ideal time to do it.
Put it that way, it's 90 days time again, so what does it matter? That's in the record now.
He won't get in the?
I would, I'll elaborate.
No, 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 it's late.
Any other discussion on the, on the amendment to the motion that's on the floor? Please call the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhart?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Clarification, I vote moves it to April?
Yes.
Correct.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, the main motion is amended.
I think it's gonna get amended again.
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, can we find out for the next, our next meeting, if there is any type of election in November of 2017?
And I've been searching, I'm not finding anything.
Okay.
But I've been sitting here on the Kane County's website, and I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's for sure.
You didn't, you didn't trust my wenttovote.com research that I did here, so. And if I do find something different, I would let you know, obviously, but currently, right now, I'm not finding anything.
Okay, thank you.
No, because the main motion has amended, so it's considered a resolution for April.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so the, the main motion, as amended, we're taking a vote on.
Clarification again, what an I vote and an A vote will be?
An I vote moves it to Nov, to April of 2017, and I vote does.
An I vote puts it on?
You're in support of the, of what's in front of you now, as amended, which says to put it to April.
Which says we will be putting it on the ballot.
Yes.
On April.
April, whatever the exact date.
Correct.
Are we all clear?
Yeah.
Please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhart?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to go to closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, do we need a roll call for that?
You need to announce what you're going into for.
Will the motioner please announce what we're, what we're going in for?
I'll make the motion that we closed, go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, sale, or lease.
Can you do that again?
All right. I'll make the motion that we go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, purchase, sale, or lease of real property for the use of the public body.
Second, there?
Yes.
Bruno seconds, all in favor?
I need to do a roll call.
We need a roll call vote.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes.[1790.83]